...City Council this Monday, September 9th, 2019. Let me call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise and say the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Here.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to... So we are now at the presentations part of our meeting tonight. And we have four different presentations, starting with proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City. And here to accept the proclamation is our Daly City Recreation Commissioner, Nadia Flamenco.
Hello, Ms. Flamenco. Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry. And we also have the Counsel General of El Salvador, Ana, Ms. Ana Valenzuela.
Hello. Good night, Mayor, members, City Manager, and people in general, my family as well, and the Counselor of El Salvador. Since I moved to Daly City, I have received a big welcoming from the community. Daly City represents to me a place where people care for others, with such an amazing program, supporting San Mateo County and the community, and we are stronger together. It's for me an honor to accept the Latinx Heritage Month, representing the Latino community, and in Daly City, representing our Native Americans and ancestors and future generations as well. I want to thank you guys for your support to our Latino community, from the city council members, Mayor Buenaventura for giving me the opportunity to be Commissioner, Joseph Curran, Director of Library and Recreation for the guide and support, and the Initiative of celebrating the Latinx Heritage Month celebration, the community centers, to my special guest, representing the Salvadoran community, the General Counsel of El Salvador, Ana Valenzuela. The community is welcome to join Latino Month, celebrating. It's going to be in Placita on Saturday, September 21st, from 12 noon to 3:00 p.m. at City Hall. So everybody's welcome to come and join us. We're going to have a lot of food and beverage and everything representing us.
Good evening, Mayor Buenaventura and City Council. My name is Ana Valenzuela, and I want to thank Commissioner Nadia Flamenco for the invitation, and thank the council for proclaiming Latinx Heritage Month, a month that brings us together to celebrate the Latino traditions, values, food, and community. As a resident of Daly City, I am extremely grateful that this city recognizes diversity and culture. Some of us are first generation, second generation, third generation, or maybe even lost count, but in one way or another, we feel identified in an area that we all call home. Let us enjoy this moment and the months to come. And again, thank you very much.
So we have this proclamation. So this is the proclamation proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City. We're going to celebrate, as Ms. Flamenco said, on Saturday, September 21st, with Placita Daly City, an event featuring performances by Susana y su orquesta adelante, Mission High School, and danza con la vida. This is in Daly City. According to the most recent statistical data, the current Latino and Hispanic population in Daly City is more than 25,000, or roughly 23.6% of the city's population. Daly City has a foreign-born population of 52.3%, ranking sixth among U.S. cities with populations of 100,000 or more, including 12,000 immigrants from America. I want to give a special shout-out to Ms. Flamenco. You know, as many of you know, we had an incident here in Daly City that affected the community of El Salvador. Nadia accompanied me and the rest of the council to some festivals throughout the Bay Area, including the one in Oakland, which the Counsel General had also been at. And Nadia was there, helping and giving out all the literature of all the resolutions that we proposed, in an effort to gain back trust with the El Salvadoran community. And she was there, she had a baby on one arm and a stroller on the other, and she just worked the whole crap. And I want to thank Nadia, because she has truly been a remarkable commissioner, someone that cares deeply about the community. So as part of Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City, Daly City also commemorates the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua on September 15th, and further commemorates the independence of Mexico and Chile on September 16th in Haiti. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Buenaventura, Mayor of Daly City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City.
So before I move on, I wanted to... I forgot to make the general announcement, that I know a lot of you are here to speak, and you're absolutely going to be welcome to speak in a few minutes, but we need you folks to fill out a speaker card if you can. And so for those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or public appearances or communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the council chambers and submit it to us as early as possible. Obviously, I know many of you, and I'm probably just going to call you up, but if you could pick a... Complete a speaker card, it makes it that much more easier. All right. Let's go on to our second presentation, which is the GOTWHEELS program. And here to present on behalf of the GOTWHEELS program is Susan Houston, the Vice President of Older Adult Services. Susan, nice to see you.
Hi, nice to meet you. Thank you very much, Mayor Buenaventura. On behalf of Peninsula Family Service, I thank the leadership of Daly City for welcoming us to share the good news about our pilot program called GOTWHEELS. My name is Susan Houston. I'm the Vice President of Older Adult Services with Peninsula Family Service. Many of you are familiar with Peninsula Family Service. Our San Mateo-based nonprofit has been opening doors and changing lives for over 60 years, almost 70 years, actually. We serve about 12,000 people a year in our programs. Through our early learning programs, we provide high-quality, innovative early learning, and help parents nurture their children's development during the critical first five years. We have four sites right here in Daly City. We also empower individuals to take control of their financial futures through our Financial Empowerment Program. Our older adults programs encourage independence, wellness, and compassionate support for older adults. We provide opportunities for older individuals in our community to connect and thrive through our peer counseling program. We conduct a weekly Filipino support group called Kapihan at Lincoln Community Center. Once a month, we have Latino and LGBT clinical supervision for peer counselors at our Daly City War Memorial Building. Soon, we'll initiate the Help at Hand program, a technology-based program that connects older adults with emotional support through digital applications. We're part of a statewide initiative to do that. We're extremely proud of our programs and the teams behind each successful enterprise, but I'm here tonight to report on our GOTWHEELS program, the Affordable Alternative Transportation 12-Month Pilot, brought to fruition by a Measure K grant from the County of San Mateo through the Office of Superintendent Canepa, your representative for District 5. Launched on July 1st as a free membership with the goal of giving 100 older residents of Daly City the convenience of on-demand taxi rides anytime, any day, for only $5 a one-way ride, GOTWHEELS hit the road running. By the end of our debut month, we had signed up half of our target. By the middle of August, we had signed up our 100th member and started a wait list. Members jumped at the opportunity to get out of bed, get out of the house, go to church, go shopping, attend parties, visit friends, get their hair done, whatever they wanted to do. They appreciated being able to ride along with three other people, maybe a caregiver, a grandchild, or a confidant, totally free of charge. If they had a wheelchair, they can have an accessible ride. We've partnered with Sarah Yellow Cab, based in Daly City also, which enables us to provide six one-way rides a month from point-to-point in Daly City, including Broadmoor, and to Kaiser Medical Center in South San Francisco, where many older Daly City residents go for their health needs. We were floored by the response to our pilot program and are really grateful for the support we receive at the outset from the city of Daly City. The Office of City Manager through Assistant Manager Stephen Stolti issued the first announcement on Next Door, posted our flyer on Cable Channel 27 and on Facebook. The Library and Recreation Department through Director Joseph Curran issued a news release on DalyCity.org and included GOTWHEELS among the community services and other resources for residents. The same department, Senior Service Division, published our PSA and the Fall Activity Guide. The Manager for Library Services posted our flyer on all platforms at the system's branches. City Council Member Jocelyn Manalo posted our flyer on her personal Facebook page. Thank you very much. The Daly City Partnership Heart Program has been referring people to us since day one. Impressive? We think so. Daly City really united behind GOTWHEELS to give mobility to its older population. We were certain that the need would be huge up here in the most populated city in the county, where 13% of residents are 65 years and older. Not astounding, you might say, percentage-wise, considering 20% of residents of Hillsborough and Milbrae are also older adults. But hard and cold numbers, which you probably know, underscore Daly City as home of San Mateo County's largest, oldest population. Here reside 14,000 people who are at or past retirement age, who have worked all their lives and deserve to enjoy the fruit of their working years. GOTWHEELS dovetails with Supervisors Canepa efforts to get out as many towns in District 5 certified as age-friendly by the World Health Organization. Daly City, along with Pacific and Redwood City, were the first San Mateo County towns to convene task force each to brainstorm and critique local services for older adults and set strategies to fill the gaps, as well as improve or enhance the existing services. Transportation is always at the top of the list, along with housing. Daly City has no shuttle service for residents such as those provided in South San Francisco. The Dolger Center does not provide pickup and drop-off for its patrons, as do many other county centers for older adults. For Daly City to be genuinely age-friendly, it needs transportation for its older residents. And this northernmost city is not alone. It's a key issue throughout San Mateo County, which is why it is one of the three top concerns for action with the San Mateo County Commission on Aging. There's a direct link between lack of transportation and feeling of isolation for older adults. The inability to drive or get out of the house shrinks their world, affecting their emotional and physical health. Studies show that the lack of transportation contributes to decline in health. Older adults' inability to make their medical appointments and regular exams leads to increased emergency room visits and more medical care expenses. Public transportation is often not an option due to inaccessible stops and infrequent schedules. Current systems are a challenge for those with limited mobility and use of wheelchairs and walkers. And so we propose on-demand taxi rides as the most effective means of transportation, because they are more accessible than public options and can address locations far from the transportation corridors. They're wheelchair-accessible minus the tech component required by current rideshare firms, and there are more traditional mode of transportation for folks of a certain age. You might want to know why we established the age of 70 as a minimum. Well, 70 is the new 50. That's what they say. Folks in their late 60s tend to be more active than their predecessors. In fact, a good number of our members admit to having current driver's licenses but need an alternative some days or nights, like when the fog sets in, for example. There's one lady, Victoria Gomez-Fredes, who was our first member. She signed up, but before GOTWHEELS, Ms. Fredes was hard-pressed to leave the house for several reasons, not the least the rash of news reports about the rideshare companies. Now Ms. Fredes takes rides to buy groceries whenever she wants. We hope to extend the program for another year, perhaps to include other North County towns. How does that sound? To do that, of course, we'll need funding, and we will count on the city of Daly City and the leadership of neighboring cities to endorse the program. Because who does not want an older population to live longer, engaged, and free from isolation? Excuse me, isolation. Thank you very much.
Ms. Houston.
Ms. Houston?
Yeah.
I have a couple of comments and also some questions. First of all, I think this is a tremendous program. I love what you said about what it does to help our seniors and how it really gives them a sense of freedom and independence and lets them get out of their sort of cocoon and isolation. I think that is a wonderful service to have. So some of the questions, as you were talking, and I was wondering about this service, I was thinking about my own dad and what... He's 90 years old, and he's limited in his mobility. He kind of wobbles a little bit, and so I guess what I'm wondering is, how much assistance can he get from his home to where the taxi is or where the driver is? What does that look like?
It's curb-to-curb. So he wouldn't get someone to help walk him up to the front door. But one of the benefits of this is that other people could ride with him if he had someone to go along who could help. I know that, for instance, Mrs. Fredes asked the taxi driver to bring her groceries up to the front door, and they've always done it. So sometimes they can help.
And then, so what does it look like logistically? So let's say I'm at home, and I want to use a service. Is there... Is it by telephone? Is it by email? Is it by text? How do I get that going?
It's by telephone. The person who is enrolled in the program just calls Sarah Yellow Cab. They have a card, and they say, "I'm in the GOTWHEELS program. I need a ride later today, tomorrow, or next Wednesday to go to my doctor's office," and this is the address. They need to say they're in the GOTWHEELS program.
Okay. And what's the response time, or how far in advance do I need to make the call?
It's best like half an hour.
Half an hour? Okay, great. Well, thank you. It sounds like a great program, and I'm grateful that your organization is doing this.
Excuse me, may I give her something back? Well, nice to see you.
See you, too.
Yeah, and her employee, Cherie Moreno, came to Holy Child Church, and I want to let you know that four of your members that you signed up that day, they're able... The amount of... They said they're not as tired when they get to church, where they have their bags. They were standing out on the corner waiting for the bus.
Oh, good.
And the bus would be like 30, 40 minutes, and now when they arrive at church, they're very happy, because now they said they have the energy to sing in the choir.
Oh, perfect.
And invited you to come by, and so you can meet them and see how it's changed their life.
I would love to.
And Supervisor Canepa always stops by there, so it would be great for you to come and speak with them, because just like you said, it gave them the energy, it gave them the freedom, because on the bus, they were standing on the corner, and they said they didn't feel like anybody noticed them or cared about them. But now they feel like somebody cares. The gentleman at the Sarah Cab was very kind.
Oh, good.
And so they said if I saw you, to make sure you knew that, and please stop by the church, and Father Oaks sends his best.
Thank you. Thank you. And Cherie, we're really blessed to have Cherie. She's amazing.
Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Ms. Houston.
Yes.
I want, first of all, I want to take this time to thank you for your presentation before this council this evening. I'd like to also thank Ms. Moreno. I didn't see her.
She wasn't able to come.
Okay. I know she sustained a little injury.
Yes.
Just prior, and she's been recuperating. I know she's been a very integral part. I'd like to thank the city manager's staff, Mr. Stolti, as well, because if folks don't know about the program, what good is it?
Right.
And due to staff's work and the collaboration, as you made mention, Ms. Houston, that is very, very important. One name I didn't hear, who made all of this possible, is Supervisor David Canepa.
Oh, I mentioned him.
Oh, did you? Oh, okay.
No, he's the reason this program's here, yes.
Well, pardon me, because I was waiting for... I was waiting, and to get the funding...
That's on page two.
That's on page two. Thank you. Thank you so much. And also, you did make mention about WHO. What's an idea with three cities with Supervisor Canepa, to which the mayor gladly asked me to take part in that committee, and we will be submitting an application pretty soon to become designated as an age-friendly city.
Wonderful.
And lastly, I wanted to say, okay, I have five years before I can go and get my hair done. So thank you so much for the report. I think we had something for you, Ms. Houston.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for the work that you've provided. Being able to work with seniors earlier in my career, I know how important it is for them to be able to access and be out of their homes and be mobile and feel interactive within the community. So what an amazing pilot program, and it seems like it's a success, so thank you for the work.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Rod.
So I want to say thank you for making the presentation as well. I think that, you know, my father, I'm getting there up there in your age, and I worry about him all the time as well. I'm just glad that there are services such as GOTWHEELS for the elder population in the city, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Well, now you can go. I thought you were scooting away.
Do we have a proclamation?
Do we have a proclamation?
No.
Oh.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's a presentation. Presentation.
Okay. Let's go on to our third presentation, which is proclaiming September 2019 as National Preparedness Month. And here to accept is Clyde Preston of the Safety Inspector, North County Fire Authority. And here to present is the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I thought I deferred to our inspector if you had any comments or was going to make a presentation before we issue you a proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you. So... The mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for declaring September National Preparedness Month, and this year's theme is Prepared, Not Scared. And as you know, earthquakes can be very scary, but also trying to prepare for one can be difficult and a little bit scary, too, not knowing where to get those resources at. But as your fire department, we have taken charge of that and tried to reach out to this community. As you know, for many years, we've taught CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team training. What we're finding was, it's about 25 hours worth of training. That's... A lot of people in our community just said, "I can't commit that amount of time." So lately, what we've been promoting is a class called Earthquake Preparedness. It's a two-and-a-half-hour class, and basically prepares you what to do before, during, and after an earthquake. And what you can teach in that class, how to use a fire extinguisher, how to turn off the gas electricity to your house, and everybody who attends actually gets a free gas meter shut-off wrench that they can attach to their gas meter. So just to kind of sweep the deal up a little bit. These classes have been very successful, and last year, we had over 47 people attend, and this year, so far, we've had 40 people attend in the classes that we've offered. And we're actually, in honor of National Preparedness Month, we are having one this month as well. It'll be Saturday, September the 28th. It'll be taught at the Ceremony Library in the community room, and it'll be from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. All we ask is that if you do want to attend, please go to our website and sign up, because we do need to make sure we have enough room for everybody. In addition to that, Daly City CERT and the North County Fire Authority will also be participating in the Disaster Preparedness Day event, which will be at the San Mateo County Expo Center in San Mateo. That's on Saturday, September the 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So we'll also be out there trying to recruit people, hopefully if they're Daly City residents, to learn about our classes that we're offering and get more people involved here in our community. So, thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Inspector Preston. Before I come down there and give you a proclamation, I like that idea about the gas shut-off wrench. Another idea, maybe you can get one to shut off the water also. I think that's very important. One time, I had pipe break and took me an hour to shut off the water, and I was like, "Oh, my goodness." I had a big bill that month. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Inspector Preston, this is a proclamation declaring it National Preparedness Month. During September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and National Preparedness Month coalition urge all Americans to take simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And with the recent Ridgcrest earthquakes in July, and Southern California disasters such as the gas line explosion and the fire in San Bruno in 2010, the San Mateo County winter storms of 2006, Hurricane Katrina in 2005, the Oakland Hills fire of 1991, and the Loma Prieta earthquake of 1989 will continue to have devastating effects on the people and on the economy. We have many whereas here in this proclamation. I'm not going to read them all, but the idea is, what did you say? Be prepared, not scared. So get out there and do it. Lastly, I'll read the last whereas. This is important safety information, should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property and damage in the event of a disaster. Now, therefore, the mayor and the rest of the city council, on behalf, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as National Preparedness Month, and encourage all Daly City residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after ... There you go! In the event of a disaster. Mr. Preston.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, our final presentation is on the Census 2020, and here we're going to have San Mateo County Census Team and the San Mateo County Office of Community Affairs. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to let Stephen start the PowerPoint.
Yes, of course.
No. Well, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, for allowing me to present to you this evening. My name's Megan Gosh. I work for the San Mateo County Manager's Office of Community Affairs, and I'm helping coordinate the Census 2020 efforts to ensure that every resident in our county is counted. So I'll begin by just giving a brief overview of what's different about the 2020 census, why it matters, what are the challenges we're facing, and how San Mateo County is working of all cities to ensure this... How we're addressing all the challenges. So what is the census? Every 10 years, the federal government is required to count every living person in the United States. That is going to occur 209 days from today. April 1st, 2020 is considered Census Day. All the information that is collected is presented as statistics. It's never individually identifiable per household or resident, and it's the cornerstone of our democracy. So what is the census? So what is the census data used for? The federal government allocates $800 billion per year in federal funding, and this is for our critical community programs. This is based on how many people live in every area. So the number of representatives to Congress and district boundaries are drawn based upon these numbers. All district boundaries, congressional, state senators, assembly people, county supervisor districts, city council election districts, school board, everything that you can imagine is based on these numbers. And it's also, it helps businesses and community leaders make informed decisions because they have data backing up where they're making their programs and policies. So what will the census ask? It's only 10 questions. So each household will be asked basic information such as the number of people living there, your homeownership, and your phone number. And then for each person living in that residence, they'll ask your age, your sex, the name, and your race and ethnicity. So although it's only 10 questions in total, sometimes residents become fatigued with answering those same six questions for every person that lives in their household, and that's oftentimes why there's an undercount. They forget, by the time they get to their child who's three months old, 0-5 population is the highest undercounted in the state of California. So, and also, the citizenship question will not be on the census survey. So that is really fantastic news. How is the data kept private? The U.S. Census Bureau takes data security very, very seriously. Tuttle 13 from the U.S. Code makes it against the law to share public, private, individual information. Every Census Bureau employee takes an oath for life to protect the privacy of responses collected, and there's up to a $250,000 fine and up to five years in prison. I have also taken this oath because I have been viewing the census data for all the addresses in the county to ensure that everyone can receive and survey. And they're also using powerful new privacy protection system designed just for this census since it's going to be all primarily online.
Wow.
So when does it happen? Starting in the middle of March, every resident will receive census information. 88% of San Mateo County will be receiving online surveys, and so you will have several opportunities to fill this out. Beginning in March, you start to receive your postcards. You have three postcards that you will receive. The fourth mailing will include a paper survey in case you still haven't filled it out. You'll have two more postcards, and then after that time is when the non-response follow-up enumerators will come door to door. We are recommending that people fill out their surveys before that happens so they don't have to deal with any fears that they may have or anxiety about having federal government employees coming to their doors. Also, there are special efforts planned to count the homeless and those living in group quarters such as nursing facilities, and we are working very closely with the Census Bureau and our core agencies to determine where those homeless counts will occur and with whom. The language access for this census is a little bit different. The paper version will only be in Spanish and English, and that could be problematic. The online version will be in English in 12 languages, and then there will be glossaries in 59 languages walking people through the census survey. So what's at stake? California in 2015 received $77 billion from the federal government, and that equates to approximately $1,000 per resident counted per year. And again, this is our money coming back to us. It's not money that we are just being given as a gift. It's our taxes that are coming back to the residents here. It's also representation for all our community segments. This funding covers our most critical community programs. It's school lunches, it's foster care, it's medical choke hospital, it's Section 8 vouchers. All of the services that need the money the most and the folks that need to be counted the most are affected by the census information. So what are we doing? We're doing a lot. We've been starting working on this in January 2018. In 2016, three out of every four Californians belonged to groups that tend to be undercounted. And did you know that California is the hardest-to-count state in the entire nation? So what does it mean to be undercounted? The groups that tend to be undercounted are immigrants, people of color, households with low income, children under 5, homeless and housing unstable. And San Mateo County is home to many of these groups. Although the number is not as high as Daly City, 35% of residents in the county are foreign-born. 47% of residents speak a language other than English at home, and we have over 100 languages spoken in our county alone. So we have a lot of issues that we're dealing to deal with. I am a database geographer, so I take this information and I map where are the hardest-to-count block groups in the county. And you can see from this map, the darkest blue colors are the hardest-to-count, least likely to respond. It's based upon census demographic information. There's 14 metrics associated with that. Census block groups that are hard to count are located throughout the entire county. It's 13 out of 20 cities include hard-to-count areas and unincorporated areas as well. So we're really focusing countywide on these efforts. And then there's new challenges based on the current political climate. There's changes in how the census will be conducted, and these challenges mean that we'll have more county residents that'll be least likely to respond to the census. So we're beginning with really coordinating these efforts from the top to the bottom. We're working really closely with partnership specialists from the U.S. Census Bureau. We are involved in weekly calls with the state census office. We're also working really closely with the entire region of the Bay Area. We're very close with Santa Clara County. We're sharing contracts. We're working together on messaging. The United Way Bay Area has overseen seven counties of the Bay Area to ensure that we're all delivering the same message with the same material to not confuse folks. And then we're working with each city individually as well. So I'm presenting to every city council to ensure that we are going to be working together in partnership. And collaboration is also key. We've, San Mateo County has invested considerable time and resources into supporting participation of all residents in Census 2020. So beginning in December of 2018, we established our Steering Committee, which will guide our complete count efforts. And representatives from each district, the Director of City Departments and City Managers are all included in this group, and that's the top one in the orange. And then we have our Complete Count Committee, which began in January of 2019. And this is stakeholders from across sectors established to provide leadership and support. And then we formed strategy work groups, which we really drilled down into each of the areas that we wanted to concentrate on. Language and access, community outreach, I oversee the technology group. And so we're developing toolkits and strategies to then push out to our community action teams, which we are in the process of funding. We had an RFP released for $1 million, and we divided the county into eight regions. Each of those regions have a CAT leader, a community action team, and they are the ones that'll be doing on-the-ground grassroots outreach, working as trusted messengers for the community. And then also, starting in April, we will have questionnaire assistance centers located throughout the county for folks that have broadband issues or digital access issues, and those will be in language as well, multiple languages. So we really need your support. There's a lot of ways that everybody, not just cities, but individuals can help us. Integrate our information into your existing communication outlets. It's put them in programs in your events. On our website, which I'll show you in just a second, we have all types of information. We have flyers in multiple languages. We have the census widget on the right-hand side. You can put it on your website. It's super easy just to have folks aware of when it's coming. Next week, we're going to release a mini-grant RFP, and this will be up to about $400,000. And this is where we want to work with a lot of really smaller groups, high schools, faith-based organizations, to again, perform this outreach and then follow us on Twitter too, please. So our website looks like this. And on the left-hand side, there's that pink box that says Outreach Resources. And then on the right-hand side shows you what's there. We have flyers in Tagalog, Spanish, Chinese, Russian, Tongan, and I think that's it. We have videos that we've created from residents from the county. Starting tomorrow, we're actually filming 20 different county employees talking about why the census is important to them. We recommend and request that everyone take little soundbites and explain why it's important. And we have a YouTube channel. We're going to post all this information and push it out to our residents. People want to hear from trusted messengers. They don't want to hear from county staff. They want to hear from the people that they see every day, and their work, their place of worship, where they recreate. We're really working together for an accurate count. And also, this is also super important. The Census Bureau is currently hiring 800 people for San Mateo County, and these are really well-paying jobs. They're $30 an hour, they're part-time, they're flexible. You make your own schedules, and they want to hire people in the communities to work in those communities. So in order to hire 800 people, we need about 5,000 applicants. So we are pushing this information out as hard as we can. So please share this as well. And then there's all our information. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Very important subject matter, and I appreciate you coming in and letting us know and having the community be aware. So thank you. You have any comment? Ms. Manella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions. Number one is you mentioned that there was the CAT leaders that were approved very recently. Out of the CAT leaders, what would be the, who would be the CAT leader for the Daly City area?
So we haven't released that information yet. We're actually in negotiations right now, but there will be one. There'll be multiple folks working in this, in Region 1, so we're going to be well-covered.
How would we find out once that is released? Would we be able to have that sent to the city, Daly City, the city manager's office so that we can spread the news?
Of course, yeah. We are hopefully presenting to our Board of Supervisors for approval September 27th, I think it is. And so we can't release any information until that point, but yeah, we will publicize it. Stephen's on our committee, so absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice.
You mentioned the names. Stephen, which I know he definitely follows up and probably under the recommendations. Good to hear that our city manager is a part of this. I would like to see that logo on our website with that countdown. Do you have the API programming language that's available so you can?
I do.
Attach that link or into somebody's Facebook page or webpage?
Right now, if you look at our outreach resources on that page.
Outreach resources, the orange, the orange bar.
Correct. There's an iframe that you can insert to your website.
Gotcha.
I can also send you it. You can put it on the end of your signature for your email.
Oh.
All types of places. Oh, yeah, you actually do have it on your website.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Rye, go ahead.
I just want to urge everybody, like those in attendance and those that are watching at home, that it's really, really, really important to fill out the Census 2020 in terms of designating districts to money. And I know there's a lot of fear that's going out in terms of the federal government and their fear tactics on undocumented immigrants. This is a really crucial time to get people to really fill this out. And I know it's going to be online, so I have like a little bit of a question about outreach because I know like last time it was on paper. Do you expect a lower or higher or?
Well, the federal government, the first numbers that have come out is the expected response rate is 55%. It's significantly lower than what we had in 2010. 2010, we were 75, 74% for San Mateo County. So we're talking millions and millions of dollars that could be at stake.
Okay. So yeah, I encourage everybody at home, here. I know there's a lot of community-based organizations that are represented in the crowd and also at home. We need to fill this out.
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that you're doing great things. And Stephen, when he gave that presentation, he was talking about how great all the training and everything that you guys do for our census. And faith in action's been very active, as you know, in our community. And so they have access to the Tagalog speaking, I believe primarily in the Spanish speaking. So just a suggestion to reach out to them because they've been knocking on doors for other issues. So they have a great connection in our community. Like our Woodrow Wilson School is primarily, as you know, in that area, Spanish-speaking. So you already have the demographics. So great work.
Thank you.
We have to work together for sure.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last question, since there are organizations in the audience and watching. You mentioned mini-grants. How does one apply and how can they help apply for those mini-grants so they can reach their community?
So we're hoping to release it tomorrow.
Oh, nice.
If not tomorrow, Wednesday. We're really pushing for tomorrow though. And it will be on our website, but you have to apply through public purchase, which is a little bit lengthy process. And so I would recommend folks register on public purchase as soon as you can, just to become familiar with how it works. And then you submit your application via public purchase, and then when the closing date occurs, which we haven't quite decided yet, then we'll access all that information. But again, it's up to $400,000, we're thinking.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful presentation.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of August, the August 12, 2019 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Objection? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Let's go on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to pull items 1, 2, 3, and 13. And so with the, is there any other council member want to pull an item besides 1, 2, 3, and 13? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve remaining items on the agenda, Mayor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, those items are approved. Okay, now we're on to the main event. So we are going to have a presentation. Items 1, 2, and 3 are as follows. Item 1 is renaming the Alta Loma Totlot in honor of Ehrlinda Tionco Galion. Item 2 is requesting Assembly Member Filting to introduce legislation to designate a portion of California State Route 35 in honor of Alice Peña Bulos. Item number 3 is naming Sarah Station Townhouse Project Community Room in honor of Alice Peña Bulos. And then later on down the road is item number 13, which is regarding amending traffic regulation. So items 1, 2, and 3, we're going to have a presentation, and here to present is, do we have Leilani here? Great. We have Leilani Ramos. Good evening, Ms. Ramos.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. Tonight, we are seeking approval to rename the Alta Loma Totlot in honor of Ehrlinda Tionco Galion. Ehrlinda resided in Daly City for over 40 years. While Ehrlinda served as a member of numerous organizations, she most notably served as a Commissioner on the Daly City Library Board of Trustees from June 11, 2007 to June 11, 2016, where she promoted the summer reading programs, sponsored book donations, assisted in author speak forums, and attended library conventions representing the Daly City Public Library. Among honorable mention is Ehrlinda's financial support for Westmore High School Scholarship Program and the North Peninsula Food Pantry and Dining Center. Her volunteerism at the Doldre Senior Center and Project Read, and assistance with the city's annual Filipino-American History Month celebration. Ehrlinda leaves a legacy of civic achievements, charitable endeavors, and commitment to serving others to improve the quality of life for the community she served. In recognition of the civic leader, the mayor and the city council of the City of Daly City have expressed their desire to rename Alta Loma Totlot to Ehrlinda Tionco Galion Totlot. Here, Alta Loma Totlot is a neighborhood park located at Alta Loma Avenue in the city's St. Francis neighborhood. The top picture shows the park prior to its completed renovation in January of 2019, and the renovation of the park is shown on the bottom picture. The park currently has a park sign labeled Alta Loma Totlot, which we can see here. Here is a mock-up of the new park sign. Public Works requested a quote from the city's sign vendor, and upon city approval, city council approval, staff will place the order, which will take four to six weeks to manufacture. Staff anticipates holding a dedication ceremony in November of 2019. Staff's available for any questions.
Wow, wonderful, wonderful presentation. So I'm just wondering, maybe you should go on with the rest of the other presentations, and then we'll take public comments on all of them at the same time.
Okay. Tonight, we are requesting Assembly Member Filting to introduce legislation to designate a portion of California State Route 35 in honor of Alice Peña Bulos. Alice Bulos served four decades empowering minorities and underrepresented groups of all ages from every background within her own community and throughout the world. Alice assisted community members who sought counsel on topics such as political empowerment, domestic violence, health care, and the U.S. residency application process, to name a few. Alice was a recipient of many awards and distinguished honors. Among the noteworthy are Alice's induction into the County of San Mateo's Women's Hall of Fame in 1988, and appointment to the Federal Council on Aging by former President Clinton in 1993, where she served until the year of 2000. Alice dedicated her life to public service and had the privilege to serve in numerous leadership roles throughout the County of San Mateo, the United States, and internationally.[1749.78] leadership roles throughout the County San Mateo, the United States, and internationally. In recognition of Alice Bulos, the mayor and the City Council of the City of Daly City believe it is fitting to designate a portion of Highway 35 in her honor. Here we have a map of California State Route 35, otherwise known as Skyline Boulevard, which runs through Daly City along the coastline, which you can see in the Red Oval. As you enter Daly City from San Francisco, there is existing signage marking the San Mateo County line going south on Highway 35. On the opposite end of the city, there is existing signage marking the Daly City city limit going north on Highway 35. Multiple signs currently line Highway 35 in both directions, and Caltrans will determine the placement of the Alice Peña Bulos Memorial Highway signs. Upon approval from the legislator, the proposed signage could look like the example here. Staff is available to provide additional information.
Great, fantastic. You want to go on to the third item?
And we have no pictures for the next item.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Great, thank you very much, Ms. Ramos. So, I'm gonna take some public comment, because I'm very excited to hear from the members of both families and friends. Let me talk a bit, a little bit about how we evolved and how we got here. So, the Alice Peña Bulos Memorial Highway was really an idea that we all had here on the council. And it started with a recognition that in LA, they did the Barack Obama freeway. And in investigating how that was all done, it was appropriate that we ask our Assemblymember Phil Ting to sponsor a bill. And that's how the process begins. Phil, I spoke to Assemblymember Ting, and he is very excited and very eager to get this process moving. And so, what he, what we're working on is working with the language, working with Phil in terms of resolutions, and what he needs to advance this bill forward. We expect that it will advance sometime in January. We expect that the legislature will pass it, and we expect Governor Newsom to sign it. Alice was very close to Governor Newsom. He was the only candidate for governor who attended her funeral when she passed away. And so, I am hopeful that we will get this done. I think it's only fitting that we do something in Daly City. It's a great stretch of highway, starting in San Francisco, where Alice's effect has been tremendous, reaching down towards Daly City and ending up in South San Francisco, where she is from. And so, I'm grateful to the council and to the staff and to Assemblymember Ting for collaborating and moving this project forward. Congresswoman Jackie Speer has pledged at least $1,000 to help fund the cost of the sign. And I expect we're going to get more help for that. And so, we're also going to honor Alice in one of our community projects, a development project here in Daly City. When Mayor Manalo was, he was the mayor at the time, I think, she was working very hard to get a community center there renamed, or named after Alice as well. So that looks like that's coming to fruition as well. Elinda Galion was someone that this community very much loved, in particular here in Daly City. She was a Commissioner for many years, serving on the Library Commission, and very involved in the Daly City Public Libraries, and involved in storytime and in working with kids. And she was just around all the time to all the different events. And she was, even when she was sick, she was always there. So I'm grateful for what she's done, and I'm thankful for the community to coming out. And so, let's start by having everybody else speak and saying a few words. Let me call up Commissioner Ray Satori, please. Help me out, Ray. Good evening.
Members of the council. Finally, the bells are toll after 25 years of lobbying for this. Actually, there is a pit on highway in Chula Vista, you have Little Manila in Alvarado in LA, and also in Carson. You have so many Little Manila there. And yet, Daly City, we have highest contiguous of Filipinos here. We are the majority of the minority here. And in spite of that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for spearheading of this. Let me start by saying that fewer called, fewer, plenty were called, but fewer chosen. Alice Bulos and Elinda Galion were the epitome of leaders, that they're believers of goodwill and understanding by building bridges instead of building walls. Ladies and gentlemen, this chamber, these were the two characters and courage of the quintessential women of our time. They're an oracle of antiquity, portending of community leadership based on active participation of the majority in the minority of the highest diverse city in the contiguous continental America. That resonate into future activities of Filipino-American activities and advocacy for a better community and a better citizen of the city and of our country, adopted country, the beautiful America. The, in the participable spirit of Bulos and Galion, were in advocating for equal rights and equal opportunities for all, especially the women's rights and opportunities for everybody. They are the natural leaders for the difficult cause and human spirit and human endeavor. I just combine this, Your Honor, because if I'm going to say a lot of things, it will take us forever. And my wife told me, just kiss, keep it short, Satori. With this, Your Honor, thank you very much for recognizing our very own. And probably, as I've said earlier, the bells are toll. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Let me call up Commissioner Perla Ebarrientos.
Honorable Mayor Ebona Ventura, Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester, members of the Daly City City Council, City Manager General Lee, good evening. I'm so honored to speak on behalf of Elinda Galion. Elinda Galion was very active in the community for more than two decades. She was very much involved in the libraries. She was a Library Board of Trustees from 2007 until her death, 2017. Her library involvement is not only here in the United States, but also in the Philippines, where she was born. She and her association donated books and financial support to La Paz-Iloilo City, Philippines, and to Bicol Region, which is also in the Philippines. She sponsored books, donated to Ceramonti Library and Skyline College, cultural books so that people will understand more of our culture. She advocated literacy for all ages and races. Also in Project Read, Elinda helped in mentoring adults to read. During Filipino Heritage Month, as the mayor was saying a while ago, she went to one classroom to the other to read books about the Philippine culture. Aside from numerous hours of volunteering, Elinda was scholarship donors to Westmore High School and to the Skyline College Innovative Fund Project that teaches women in automatic technology. She is a very giving person. As two-term president of BBRC, she enhanced the collection of items and fundraising for the Philippines typhoon on those wetting. Elinda's hard work continued to reach out to the community, not only in San Mateo County, but to the Philippines. She was able to get the grant for cancer awareness and prevention, a community outreach program which is very informative about health and wellness. Elinda's community involvement in different agencies or organizations showed how committed she was, improving the lives of people, not only in San Mateo County, but also in the Philippines. There is no boundary or limitation for Elinda's love and care for the people. Elinda has a big heart. But remember, everybody knows that she is something else. Once you cross her way and she doesn't like her, here you go. That is Elinda. So I always miss her and lots of memories of her. With all her outstanding contribution to the community, the city of Daly City, I thank the mayor, vice mayor, members of Daly City Council for this beautiful gesture. It is a very deserving honor. Thank you.
We are fortunate to have Alice Bulos's family here, with Charles Romillo and Beth and Charity, and so I welcome you to come up and say a few words.
Yes. Magandang gampis ang lahat. Good evening, everybody. I'm Charity Romillo, and as the eldest, he asked me to go first. Just kidding. Thank you again, Mayor, Council, and community. It is an honor tonight to stand here, and I hope I can keep it together, because as you all know, we all love my grandmother. And I remember her stories, and I just wanted to talk from the heart tonight, because a lot of times we prepare speeches, and what I love the most is her story of how she immigrated here, and reminders that, you know, how a lot of us immigrated here. And despite the fact that they told her there is no job for people like her here, they fought. They were that exemplary Roma of resilience. And time and time again, like especially as growing up, reminding me of not only my culture and for the community, we'd be there, they'd, she'd welcome people to the house. Our house became a home for the community in meetings and second homes to a lot of people. She's not representing only Filipinos, like, or vets, or that she was on the Commission on Aging. It's so important that we have strong Filipina women out there that were visible, you know, and people of color that are visible to our community, that it can be passed on in that story. Like, now, you know, I didn't think I was going to be here as a Philippine, as a Filipino-American, being a Filipino bilingual educator and so much Filipinas, if it wasn't for her. I remember coming home and my advisor telling me I'm going to fail because I don't know English, and I started crying to her, saying, hey, Grandma, I'm going to fail. My advisor told me I'm going to fail. I can't speak English, can't speak Tagalog. What's going on? You know? And she said, don't worry about that. I thought, I was in a, for 30 years, you know, I was on the board of, she was on the, in University of Santa Tama, she was, she did dissertations and she graded all this stuff for 30 years. She's like, sit down, don't worry about it. And I went from an A-F to an A. And she did that also for community. Just when you think you're going to give up, there she is, someone calling her and reminding that no one's an island. And like, some of the things I remember saying is like, education is empowerment. So I still tell that story to my students, too. I tell them real stories. Yeah, my grandmother is the one who helped, you know, rewrite my paper and say not to give up, and that we do know what we're talking about, you just need support and help. And so, again, I'm just glad that she's one of our heroes, and hopefully this, like, it's like a very symbolic moment, because it's like that lifeline, that highway that people will have to go through, and how she's one of those members. And we have so many community members that finally, you know, we're here. Like you said, the bells are toll, they're ringing, that we have people like you that also are influenced here. A lot of you here, too, on the council. So I'm really honored, and on the behalf of our family, we always want to say, thank you, ma'am salamat po sa'ng lahat. We can't thank you enough. And I hope this is the voice, and for many generations to come, to know that there are people that are here for us. Thank you.
I'm aware now it is my turn to go next. On behalf of my family, thank you, Mayor Ebona Ventura, City Council Members, City of Daly City, in support of this resolution for my family. We call our momi Alice, everyone knows her as Tita Alice, but she always asks us to call her momi Alice. We know she would be so recognized, or she would be so honored to be recognized to have a highway and a community room be named after her. And also, we're also glad to have the family of Elinda, because this is a historic moment in Daly City to be recognized with a large population of immigrants, Filipinos. Also, thank you for the recognition of the different ethnicities and populations. Daly City is home to what this country is all about, like, different opportunities. And I know for her, she would be especially proud for everyone being here today. For myself, encourages myself and my family to continue her legacy and to be involved in the community with the topics and issues she was so passionate about. It's all mentioned here today, from education and health. We all mentioned getting out there to vote, and the importance of voting, and what happens when you don't vote, as well as the census count, to elderly, youth, workers, and women's rights, among the other topics mentioned today. For myself, I'm also part of those community organizations, and we hope to work with different community members and organizations to help share those Daly City resources and to continue making positive impacts and empowering our community for healthy, sustainable lives and changes in our community. We also like to thank, again, Assemblymember Phil Ting, Mayor Ebona Ventura, Councilwoman Jaslyn Malalo, everyone here today, just for putting forth the resolution. And we know Tita Alice has many friends, colleagues, and community members, so we just want to thank all of them for that, because it'd be a long list. We appreciate your support. And then also, it also, before I forget, we do have another brother, so my younger brother couldn't make it today, but he's also involved in the community with the church, as well as the sports activities for middle schools and elementary schools. So we definitely also want for our future generations to share those resources as well. So, once again, we appreciate your support and are grateful for this opportunity. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Come on, Beth.
It's so hard for me to talk about my mom, and I'm so very emotional about it, but thank you so much, Mayor, and of course Jaslyn, for everyone to have my mom, to have a Memorial Highway. I hope it will push through, and I thank you so much for everything what you have done. Okay.
Thank you, Beth, thank you. Equally as fortunate, we have the Tionko Galion family, who are here, present up front. So you're welcome to come on up. Please do.
Good evening, Mayor Ebona Ventura and the Daly City Council Members and the community, family, friends. We are honored and humbled for this recognition. My mom loved her community, and she put her heart and soul into it. She set an example for all of us to follow, to give back to the community for future generations. It is our hope that this park can symbolize such an amazing person and be a light for all of us to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, I agree, thank you. Tricia, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor Ebona Ventura and City Council Members and the community. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Patricia Tionko De Vera. I am the niece of Elinda Tionko Galion, and also former Board of Trustees for the Daly City Libraries. And at this time, I just want to take a few moments to extend our gratitude on behalf of the Tionko family, to, for recognizing Tita Elinda Galion for this evening. She has dedicated so much of her time and effort to the city she did call home. And I know that she'd be looking down on us with great pride and honor, as we recognize her for all of her efforts that she's put towards the city and to our family. We all miss her dearly, and this recognition will keep her legacy alive.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the family? Or any, any friends would like to say anything?
Let's ask you to talk about your mom.
Of course, come on up. And Mr. Espirito, you're next.
Here I am again. See, I watched with Alice from. See, I watched with Alice from the beginning until the end, so she was just a little girl. Good evening again. I know Alice Bulos way back in 1980. That was a long time. To make this story short, she asked me one day, she called me that Assemblyman Lou Papan called her to have an audience with the Filipino community. There were seven of us, met Lou Papan, and we were told that we were the fastest population in San Mateo County, that what we need is an organization. So Alice and I were talking, and then we invited people to have the first meeting, which was named the Pilam Democratic Club of San Mateo County, and that was 1983. Alice's goals was to see and witness lots of Filipinos running for an office. She and Carl Rensstrom, with Steve Arribalo, organized the Pilam Councils. Carl was the first chair. Alice traveled from county to county to help organize the Pilam Democratic Club. She encouraged men and women to get involved in politics. Alice built a strong foundation in the Filipino politics history. She mentored and encouraged young people to run for an office. She is the godmother in the Filipino politics. Alice organized such grassroots movements where she encouraged Filipino to be visible, get out and get involved and participate. Through Alice's guidance and dedication and motivation, we have seen the results of politics today. The two Filipinos who are elected for an office, we credited this to Alice Bulos. She helped lots of politicians to win, Filipino or non-Filipinos. She always gave blessings to those she knows that are evil and good as an elected official. Alice is a good mentor, motivator. He encouraged people in a very nice way. So Alice Bulos sits an example, and her legacy will not be forgotten because the Pilam Democratic Club was the eye-opener for the Filipino, I mean, community. It was Alice then, a pioneer who did all these things. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, and also to the family of Tita Alice and Tita Linda Gallion. I met Tita Alice way back in 1996 when I joined the Filipino News. At that time, he was inviting me to some events, encouraging me to participate, to be active in the Filipino community. Fast forward, after 10 years, he invited me again because she was very proud to attend the Democratic Convention. At that time, I'm not familiar with the works of politics, the ins and outs, and I remember meeting him the first time in Southern California. And he told me, Tita Alice told me that Attorney Benaventura has potential and he wants to serve the community. So what I miss most is sometimes she'll call me in the morning, you know, ask me if I can cover this, you know, potential politician, you know, to, you know, to, not to promote, but, you know, her platform. So what I miss with both of them is our trip to the Democratic Convention because she will call me, you know, about the logistic, the transportation, because she said, "We need to bring more bodies there," because she's very proud to have the, you know, out of the API, we have our own Filipino Democratic Convention. And now it's in good hands, you know, with Mayor, Vice Mayor Manalo, and also the LA group. So I think after she passed, it's hard for me to go back because of the fond memories traveling both Tita Alice and Tita Linda. So I'd like to thank the family for sharing us, you know, even a short period of time with Tita Elinda and also, you know, Tita Alice. So now I have to consult Tita Perla now because I don't have anybody to talk to. So once in a while, even though we hardly talk, but if I see her, I know, you know, she's, she's well, well more active in the community, so I ask her, "Tita, what's the latest?" But fast forward, I'm sure she's very proud of you, Mayor, because of the, you know, all the, what you've accomplished here, especially in Daly City, and empowering more younger generation to serve. So, thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you. Let me, I got two more, then I'll call you, Nelly Fernandez.
I will just stop here because I don't want to put my back on my big ownership. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Maybe extend up, yeah, we have a microphone for you. There you go.
I guess I'm the oldest person here because some 50 years ago, Alice was my classmate in college. So we graduated at the same time, and all I can tell you is throughout our years in college, she had always shown her kind of personality, great leadership. But you would not think she would be a great leader because she's so soft-spoken and the ways she treats people, you do not see any aggressiveness in her personality. She was really that kind of a person, sweet, gentle, humble. From the time we were students, everybody loved her. And later on, we both graduated at the same time. Of the thousand students, we were the two lucky people to be taken to teach in the university. And we were very much happy about that. She was in the College of Liberal Arts and I was in the College of Medicine. Later on, I found out that she had gone here to the United States, and when she was here, she organized our organization, Tomasian USA. This is an organization that honors not only those who had passed the porters of the University of San Mateo, but it keeps on honoring all those who have been veterans of the college and are recognized, especially in their practice year in the United States. And it's with pride, really, that I could say the university we worked in had been receiving so much commendation of what our graduates had been doing here in the United States. And so every year in our Tomasian, whose main goal is educational empowerment, every year, our annual ball is like a convention of political people. Why? There are so many politicians who so love Alice that every time there is an awardee taken from our own graduates, these politicians here in San Mateo and San Francisco, they would all come over and individually would give their awards and citation to our recognized alumnae. So that my friends who would attend this ball would say, "What is this? I thought this is an annual ball. It's like a political convention." We cannot help it, you know, Alice has that much leadership in political affairs. In fact, she is recognized here in San Mateo as being awarded as a VIP, just like a great player. She had given recognition to that as well as outstanding profile in excellence, especially not only all the Filipinos, but all women that she had come in contact with. She had been that kind of a leader, and her leadership was, as I said, soft-spoken. He led our Tomasian USA for 28 years, and nobody would take her role as being president. Election comes only in five minutes. Somebody will stand up. We would like to elect all the officers, especially the president. In five minutes, the gable goes down and the president becomes again Alice. And so throughout the years, from 1978, when it was founded, and I came to the United States in 1980 and joined them, I was able to see her and recognize her leadership, her gentle and very much appealing leadership that nobody wants to change her. So throughout those years, she was always our president, and I will tell you that her leadership was such, it was already the week before she died, she was still dictating us, what are the things we have to follow. Nobody would fit in in her big shoes, so that the presidency became a very big question mark in our organization, but we could not help it. Nobody wants, because nobody can fit in. On the last year, she would say, because Mayor was there, she was wanting already, we were wanting to solve it, to dissolve it after her leadership, but Mayor said, "No, you should not be dissolving it." And we did continue with it, but somehow, as everybody recognized, nobody can fit in in her big shoes as leadership in community and recognition of all those who had graduated in our university. So that all these years, we do believe that hearing that Alice was going to be given a memorial highway, it is a very fitting tribute to her. In fact, she spent half of her life after graduation dedicated, without a family, without the classroom, she had dedicated herself to every good thing that she can do to her community, so that even our organization was recognized because of the leadership and her connection with the community. So we thank you all for giving her that honor, which she rightfully deserves, because she truly had served her country the best way that she can. And our university is proud of her, as all the regions there who come would give the citation that Alice does deserve some kind of a memorial here in the United States. So thank you very much for your encouragement.
Dean Fuller.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Benaventura and Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester, City Council staff, and the public. I think this is superbly fitting, and I think in 2007, I met Tita Alice and Tita Linda when I first became a Daly City trustee for the Vector Control District. And I also met you, Ray, before you even were running. So I do condone this. I think this is a phenomenal idea and a phenomenal way to honor two iconic women, not only for the Filipino community. Many of you don't know, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Daly City, but my stepmother is also Filipina. She's Panay. She is from Cebu, and, you know, she speaks two languages. So I have always been grown up in the Filipino community, but, you know, in so many ways, Tita Linda in particular would always make me feel welcome. I think that's where I gained all my weight from, was all the food eating and, you know, all the festivities that I was invited to. I would always tease Tita Alice. I'd be like, "Oh, so you're my godmother." And she goes, "No, Tita Perla's your godmother." And I said, "Okay, you're all my godmothers, you're all my titas." But so many memories over the years, and I wish I had gotten to know Tita Alice more. But Tita Linda, Audrey, you know that broke my heart. Everyone here knows I lost my mother in 2015, and to have two back-to-back, Tita Alice and Tita Linda, it was really, really a huge loss to the community. And I am grateful and honored to have known both of these women, who were powerful leaders. They got me drug into the Filipino Bahandayan Resource Center as a, you know, a member, and the Filipino Democratic Club as a member. I was never an outcast. I was always told I'm more Panay than some Panays. So, you know, with that said, I hope that someone will continue on their legacies, not only by, you know, posting memorial names, but by their homage of what they've done for the community on the Democratic Caucus. And I will forever be humbled and grateful to have known both of them. And for those who didn't know them, wow, huge, it's a huge loss, and still to this day, it's, like you, Ray, it chokes you up. Just different. It's a different kind of genre and generation that they proliferated. So with that said, you know, taga sa langit, Tita Alice and Tita Linda Gallion. Salamat po.
Art balancing, art balancing.
In respect to the governor, I'm gonna take my hat. This is the first time I have attended your council. Brief history, '69, '69, first Filipinos immigrants came from the Philippines. We organized Pilpama. We have Estiba, we have Isclamado. And then I saw Alice Bulos. I said, "Why don't we get along with everybody?" Saw Alice. In fact, I didn't realize that her name is Beth, and that's my wife's name, so we're I was very active in San Francisco as an activist. In Alice, in ITA, the Daly City in San Francisco, that's our secret. In the terms, issues around between San Francisco and Daly City, I would call up Alice and would meet together. It was our secret meeting. And Alice was just full of wisdom and a very silent activist, and she didn't say much, but I listened to her. And if Alice were alive today and seeing the progress, Mayor Benaventura, and the last Filipinos in our community, in fact, I ran against Javi Luzo, he beat me to it, but we are still working on. I'm a young senior, I'm 80 now. So I wish we gave thanks to Alice when she were alive. And I think the council should think of giving an award to people when they're alive, you know, because I think they would appreciate it more. So anyway, thank you for honoring her. At the bottom of our hearts, we have a long way back, from '69 to '70. Most of our friends, the Boras are dead, the Estibas are dead, the Isclamados, and most of them. Maybe just a few of us are left, but we keep on fighting, and I think I'm very happy that our group are really building up and we are part of the community. We're not just excluded as Filipinos, we're all Americans. So I'm in an area in Westport. The city awarded me as the mayor of Westport for life. It's a diverse community. When I started there, there were only two Asians, and now it's so diverse, and I'm proud to be representing a diverse community. So thank you, and let's keep going on, because this is our country. We're not just Filipinos, we're Americans. And thank you for Alice, who started with all of us, through Americans, together. And I gave my heart to Alice right now, because I know her in my heart. We work together very closely. We have a secret message together. We work very, very hard, quietly, and this is the result for all of us. And I said to God, "Thank you for giving us Alice."
Thank you. Mike Chali.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to express also my thanks and gratitude to families of Alice and Elinda, but especially I'd like to express my thanks and gratitude to Alice and Elinda. Through the years, their commitment to this community, public service, to San Mateo County, to this part of the world has made all our lives better. We are beneficiaries of their good works, their time and talent, and I'm glad you've made this, these memorials to both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Okay, I think that, we have one more. Larry Formalejo, come on up, Larry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Benaventura and Councilmember. My name is Larry Formalejo, and I was a former council member of Colma. I met Tita Alice in 2004 when I was elected. She wanted to get to know me right away, and the first time I met her was at the Tomasian. First, she thought I wasn't Filipino because of my last name. She thought I was Italian. Then she thought I was Latin, but no, I told her I was purebred. But she mentored me through my years on the council, and I know she mentored a lot of people. This dedication to Alice signifies what her legacy has become. And to the Elinda family, I just met her briefly, but she was a fine lady, sweet lady. To the audience, remember who she is? Remember both of them. The great ladies in the past. The great ladies in the past, and their legacy will stay with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. The comments I have for this evening, let me turn it to my council to make any concluding remarks before we vote on the resolution. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to speak on my memories of Tita Erlinda. I got to meet them and Tita Erlinda in 20, it was only in 2014, but she opened her arms and was such a beautiful soul. And when people talked about going to Democratic conventions, et cetera, Tita Perla and her opened their arms to me and took me to my very first convention, let me stay in their room and really showed me what it was about. And in that moment, it was very special to have the elders so supportive. And I will never forget her one moment when we were at the convention and there was a training that was happening, and she looked at me and she's sitting right next to me, there is a paperwork, and she took the paper, she passed it over, and she looked at me with her big eyes and she was like, and that meant, I mean, in that moment, it was like, "You better sign up." And she didn't have to say it, but it was like, "You better or else." And so from that moment, it was very sweet, but also I felt very humbled. And so, to the family, I remember her and really such a beautiful soul. And I'm so blessed to have met her and her influence and really her legacy of giving to the community is tremendous. To the family, Charles, Charity, Tibe, really, you know, I know Charles and Charity for such a long time through college, but I definitely see the legacy of the grandmother and them. I didn't get to personally meet Tita Alice on a one-on-one basis. It was through my work with the Filipino World War II veterans that I saw her in her face when I was younger. But her beautiful legacy, I saw through the mentorship of Mayor Ray Buena Ventura. I know that he was heartbroken when she had passed and I asked him, I said, "You know, I may have not known her personally." And one thing he mentioned was, you know, what she taught me was to always remember to give back and pay it forward. And that was the words that I will never forget. And I saw that through the work and through the guidance that she had given, Mayor Ray Buena Ventura, and how he took that to heart in the same way to remember to always give back to the community and pay it forward. And so I'm very humbled to work with the family around asking their permission around the community hub in Daly City because of her legacy. You know, speaking with the grandchildren, they said it would be fitting to hold the name with Tita, since everyone knew her as Tita. But also work with the city and organizations around housing a youth organization when that community room or hub is not utilized. So really in its utilization, affect the spirit that Tita Alice Bulos did, that the next generation will know her legacy and then they will be able to pay it forward. So thank you to both families. It's truly an honor with my colleagues and the leadership of Mayor Ray Buena Ventura to be able to be in this place and to give honor and tribute to both two amazing women that have definitely paved the way and that we will remember forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I too had the pleasure of Erlinda Galion and her lovely, especially that daughter of hers. There were several occasions, one in particular when we did the healthcare rollout. I remember that in particular with your mom and you running in and that connection that was so, so positive in your face. It was a reflection of your mom and your heart. And I hope that we can continue that together, you and I, because I felt that that in my life was something that was so strong as a woman, but so warm. She had a strongness but a warmness, if that makes any sense to you. Because I remember being at a restaurant with Dory, well, let's not forget Dory, and we went to a restaurant after a Democratic meeting and Tita Erlinda was very hungry. One of her favorite restaurants was in Milbury, and it was a Thai restaurant, am I right? And so she began with the questions, you know, like, because I'm in the service, I was representing, because Tita Dory was the president of the club at the time, and if she would be busy, I was very humbled because they would allow me to stand up and speak at the Democratic meetings on behalf of the Filipino-American Democratic Club in the lightning round and to give them updates from San Mateo County on what was going on in the Filipino community. So that was an excitement to me, and she said, "You say it with such passion." I said, "Because it's my heart." And when somebody tells you they know that your heart is doing the right thing and that connection, and they know that you are there for the right reasons, being welcomed into a community, a community that is very similar to my culture as well, then that's beautiful. And Tricia, the same for you. You know, that big heart, yours and that smile, it just glows across the room, just like the reflection that she has. That will continue, and we must make sure that, I echo that, I'm sure with everyone in this room, that it is up to us as individuals to make sure that everyone we meet, everyone we know, everyone we encounter, that they are known, that they are welcome in this community. And it doesn't matter who you are, what background, and you are supported. And Tita Perla, the same, who's welcomed everyone as well, and everyone in this room. And then let me move over here to Charles. Well, Charles, when I first met you, I was very humbled because I didn't know the connection, I kind of knew the connection, but when I, it made sense that that was your grandmother because the humbleness, just like Tita Erlinda, the giviness of your heart, giving 180%, receiving the text, you're out trying to help everyone, everyone, and quietly, just like Erlinda, just like Alice. Everything was quiet. There were things that we would never know that she would do, giving of her heart, her time with people. And I was very humble when you attend those services and you see Assembly Member Kevin Mullen sharing stories, personal stories, not in a grandiose manner, but what it meant to them, what their lives meant to these women. So I haven't been on the council as long, but I remember one of my favorite pictures that Mayor Buena Ventura, that really brought tears, is that Tita Alice was sitting here in this council, and he does the traditional with the respect, and I mean, this actually brings tears to my eyes, and he took his hand and he put it on the forehead with the tradition. And the sincerity, the love that this man has was beyond, you could just, you could feel it. You could actually feel it, that between them. So it's fitting and exciting for new things to come. And I have a small message from Marietta Flores, Elizabeth Santos, who also knew, they attend Holy Child, and they're 91 is Elizabeth Santos, and she said, "Please make it a daytime dedication, because she's 91 and she can't see at night." So she said that she would be honored, all the university women. So very humbled to be here during this moment in history, indeed, for these women. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. DiGiovanni, Dr. Rod.
I think one thing that I have the benefit of being on city councils, I get to expand my classroom. I get the privilege to teach Filipino-American Studies at Skyline College. And one thing that my students are learning right now is the role of pre-colonial Filipinas, the role of Babaylan's. And if people are not familiar with Babaylan's, they are the healers, the leaders, the warriors of tribes in the Philippines. A lot of times we see women as the ones that are inside the homes, burying the children in the kitchen. But in pre-colonial times, they were the ones that were the leaders, they were the spiritual guiders. And when I hear the stories of both Tita Erlinda and Tita Alice, it reminds me of what a Babaylan stands for. The leaders, the healers, the ones that can lead a clan. And I just feel so fortunate to work with Tita Erlinda when I was a library board of trustees. And I remember coming on board, I was like a nervous wreck, just like how I was as a nervous wreck coming on city council. And she had these eyes that my grandma or my mom had, and she had this steady look like everything's going to be all right, that Lola can give or grandma can give to one to keep things steady and that you know what you know and you just go with it. So I just want to say thank you to both families. Charles and Charity, I know y'all directly and indirectly through our work, you know, Charity's work at Galingbata, Charles, our work in Filipino Community Center in Excelsior. And Tita Beth, you see me all the time whenever I come to the dentist's office. And I never, I had to put everything together and I was like, "Oh, my God, y'all are really dastardly." And I had no clue until like a few appointments in, and Tita Beth were like, "You know my son, Charles, and you know my daughter, Charity, you almost do the same thing, you serve the community." And one thing that I, as part of the Filipino-American Democratic Club, I am along with Justlyn and every here is that I didn't know them personally, but I do have the responsibility to carry on their legacies. The legacies of service, the legacies of community. And to understand where we came from and where we're going. And I just want to say, this is such a tremendous project to have two Panays as symbols in our communities and to have representation. And as a person growing up in this country, thinking that the only Filipinos were my family, this is huge. This is so huge beyond just having names of two Panays as symbols in the community, but to have my kids to be like, "Look at that. Isn't that crazy to have two Panays' names on a highway and in a park?" I would never have thought in my lifetime that I would ever have anything like this. Growing up in Southern California, coming here, so again, thank you to the both families and I bear, I'm a bearer of their legacies to move forward with the work that they've done. Thank you.
Well said. Vice Mayor.
Wow. So far, Magandang Angapisayong Lahat. To the families, Maraming salamat walang aluman. I wanted to provide some comments. And to Commissioner Satori, your speech definitely raised the bar because the words you put together really brought thoughts to my mind. To Francis Esperito, I'm kind of like you. I didn't have any idea who these ladies were, and I was brand new. So I just wanted to provide a little history on Tita Alice. I first met Tita Alice at a Tomasian's event called Alice, to which I was the president of Faleo, the Filipino-American Law Enforcement Officers Association, to which we were a resource provider. So I met her there and she was very, very quiet. And I said to myself, hmm, will she remember me? Does she know me? And in the years to follow, when I would see Mayor Ray Buena Ventura bring her to different events, and she would command the crowd, and I was the type of person, I don't like to crowd anybody, so I'd just stay in the background, but I know she knew. For Tita Galion, I have to laugh because we were putting together Despedida for Kanjen Pino when he was leaving. And I came across, Tita Perla will probably remember this, and we were trying to determine who was going to pay and who would not pay. You don't want to cross Tita Erlinda. She says, "Everybody pay." And that was something, in other words, to be so tiny, but yet she was so strong. And I nicknamed her Henelal. As somebody she commanded respect. What I want to say, and I want to leave you with this, as for both ladies, they both were quiet as a church mouse, but both had the resolve of a lion. Again, thank you. Thank you for sharing them with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So I think this is what we're going to do. So we're going to take a vote on all, one at a time, the three resolutions. And then after the vote, I'm going to present to the families a copy of the draft resolution. And then we're going to take a, after that portion, we're going to take a five to 10 minute break and then go on with the rest of the agenda, so the people who wanted to leave can just leave. All right, so let me go to resolution number one, which is renaming Alta Loma Tatlot in honor of Erlinda Tionko Galion. Can I get a motion to, for that resolution? I'll make the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Aren't we all second? Get a roll call, please.
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations. to introduce legislation to designate a portion of California State Route 35 in honor of Alice Bulos. I'll make the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, let me get a roll call, please, on that.
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations. Let me do the third resolution, and before I do it, let me just clarify. So there was discussion, so the, I wanted to make sure that we are clear on naming the community room. Ms. Manalo, was your intention to name it the Tita Alice Bulos Community Hub, or was it the, your intention to name it the community room? If you could speak on that motion.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Upon speaking with the family, it was Tita Alice Bulos Community, and we chose hub because it was just not like a room. It's kind of like a hub where you bring people together and not just a room. And so upon speaking with, hopefully working with city staff around what they've done at Hillside Community Center, with having an organization there in the interim when there isn't a rental facility, it was more fitting to have it named as a hub, as people coming together.
All right. So then the motion is naming of Sarah Station Towne's project after naming a Tita Alice Community Hub. You make that motion?
I'd be honored to, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Congratulations.
Okay, so thank you very much, everybody, for coming. That concludes this portion of our meeting. I'm sure you wanna mix and mingle and perhaps take some pictures, so we're gonna do a five to 10 minute break. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody again. Thank you for coming back after the break and moving forward with us to the next item in the meeting, which is item number thirteen. Amend traffic regulations to install two two-hour metered parking spaces in front of five ninety-two Mission Street and remove the crosswalk on Longview Drive at Longview Park. Mr. Chu, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you mentioned, there are two items on this agenda for the amending traffic regulations. The first item is to install two parking meters on Mission Street. There was a request from a business owner in that area requesting to have more turnovers. And there's two spaces on Mission Street that currently does not have a parking meter. And so the proposal is to meter those two spaces similar to the other meters in that area. And then the second item is the proposed removal of the crosswalk at Longview, at Longview Park. This existing crosswalk, it is a mid-block crossing, and it is a crossing that basically is uncontrolled, meaning that there's no stop signs, there's no traffic signal. It's also a non-standard width crosswalk, and it does not have accessible curb ramps at those, at the two locations. Those items could potentially be corrected. However, the location of the crosswalk is in a location where it's approximately a hundred feet away from a curb in the road, and so there's a visibility issues, concerns in regards to the location of the crosswalk. And as you all know, staff is doing a lot in regards to safety throughout the city, accessibility. We're doing our Vision Zero Plan, and we're doing a lot of our ADA self-evaluation transition plan. So along those lines, we evaluated this particular crosswalk and felt that a more suitable location would be at the Longview Drive and Montebello driveway intersection. That location currently is completely controlled by stop signs. There's also a street light at that location to have the visibility at nighttime, and on both directions, it's a straight shot. So there is adequate visibility, you're not coming around a curve for that. So for that reason, staff is recommending that it be removed. Per California Vehicle Code and also per a policy that the City Council adopted back in two thousand and two, there was a requirement to have the location posted in regards to the proposed crosswalk removal. It was required to be posted thirty days prior to any actual action to remove the crosswalk. City staff, we actually did it two times. We did it first in March and April timeframe, and then we did it again in August timeframe. We knew this item was gonna come before council, and because the March timeframe was several months earlier, we wanted to kind of do it closer to the actual council meeting, so we did it again. In addition to that, for the second meeting, we indicated that a meeting would be held at City Hall in the training room. That was done on August the twenty-first. And so at that meeting, no members of the public showed up. We also did not receive any letters, any phone calls, emails in regards to concerns about removing the crosswalk. So for that reason, staff is proposing to remove the current location. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions from the council? Go ahead.
Nothing other than when we received the letter from Mr. Jones, I think one of the things that, because he wasn't notified, but I know according to the law per se, is a hundred feet or whatever for notification?
The notification, the notification is done for the affected residents in the area. And so we notified the residents that are within a block of that location. Those are the residents that would be supposedly using that crosswalk. And so we indicated that as those are the affected residents that we notified. And also, we had barricades with the signs posted at that location. And when we did it the second time, we actually changed the color of the paper just to, you know, make it stand out a little bit more, so people don't confuse it with the old notice that was there. So again, we did it twice, and we didn't hear from anyone. And so we...
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess the only thing is that, that I would suggest if people want to be on a, I don't know, is that advantageous to put, for those that they're present of homeowners, if they want to be notified if there's anything in their, going on in their neighborhoods or anything like that? Is that viable or not viable?
It's definitely possible in regards to providing some additional notification. One thing that would be helpful for me is, is understanding who's interested in that, understanding the actual locations of the homeowners association. For some associations, it's really obvious. But there's other associations that may not be as formal, and maybe it's not as clear in terms of what those limits are. But we can definitely try to work on that and making sure that list is kept up to date.
Yeah. So I do get the part about the curve, that's dangerous.
Yeah, and again, we're trying, I mean, the way things were done in the past and the way things done now, it's different. And so as we get into our accessibility issues and we're looking at Vision Zero, we come across these situations where we take a closer look and evaluate it and see if it still makes sense or not. And in this particular case, we feel that there's a much better location in the location where it's fully controlled, it's all stop-controlled. Again, there's a street light and visibility is very clear, so that's the recommendation.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that the meeting was here in the training room, City Hall. Is it usually where the meetings are here at City Hall? Or is there a way in the future to have the meetings closer to kind of the area in which there is a change?
Typically, it needs to be in a public facility, and for us, we need to make sure that these facilities are accessible. If it's at someone's house, then there could be issues and, you know...
I mean, I wouldn't recommend someone's house, but maybe whatever's the closest kind of public facility, because maybe, you know, maybe it's hard for people to come here. I'm just thinking of other ways where, if anything, it's reaching out to the community, and it's closer. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Yeah, that is possible. I mean, if there's a community center or something that's available and it's not being rented, yes, definitely.
So maybe, I don't know, it was just an idea if it's around some changes, and it's easier for residents to access.
Yeah, that definitely can be done, and, but again, they also have the ability to write us, to call us, to send us an email. But we can definitely think about that in the future in terms of a closer location.
Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
I don't want to lose that thought. It's ten after nine. Thank you, Mr. Chu. I remember when attending the California League of Cities, and they showed the different cities in different ways we can, I mean, because I know you just started, and you did a great job. This is indeed no criticism at all. But, and I was speaking to the city manager, how they do it in Fremont is like when they do, say they're gonna have a construction site, or they're gonna have a hearing, they would put up like, it would be as big as a sandwich board at that site of where the change would be, or where the development was gonna be. So it was like more visible for the public, because I know that we do, we follow the law, and it's usually an eight-and-a-half by eleven piece of paper, and even I walk by and seen it on the light poles, even though it's noted publicly in, you know, legal-wise. But because of maybe going forward, or we could talk about maybe having like something larger at the site where there's gonna be change, so the neighbors can see it when they go by. I don't know, just a suggestion or throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, usually for projects that impact traffic, like paving projects or slurry seal projects, those we have the larger signs, because people are driving and they go by quick. In this particular case, this is a crosswalk issue, and it impacts pedestrians. And so because the pedestrians are walking typically, if there's a barricade at that location, they would be aware of it and be able to see that, so.
So maybe we could just reach out to the people that are part of the groups, like the Corps, that the Joneses are part of, and then whatever respective neighborhoods, if there's something in their neighborhood, we can put them on an email list with the city manager or something, I don't know, something, so they feel like they're included.
Yeah, I mean, we can look into that in terms of...
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm wondering what precipitated the removal of this crosswalk in the first place?
So right now, the crosswalk is, the decision hasn't been made yet, and this is part of the process that we're in right now in regards to the crosswalk. The city staff, we have paving work going on in this area. As a result of that, we always look at the existing striping situation that's there, reevaluate, because as part of the paving projects, it would need to be removed and reinstalled, and so we kind of look at that. As I mentioned earlier, in terms of how we review these, I mean, we have a high emphasis now in terms of trying to increase safety through our Vision Zero Action Plan. And so because of this particular situation, us doing work in this area, that's what precipitated us in terms of reviewing this particular location. And again, this, this crosswalk has been in place probably forty, fifty years, and so we just need to review it to see if it still meets current best management practices. And based on our review, we felt that there would be a better location for the crossing, a safer location for the cross.
All right. To reconfirm, at the present time, this particular crosswalk is uncontrolled. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That means there is no stop sign, there is no slow down sign, there is no black and yellow regulatory sign. It is basically two lines in the road, uncontrolled.
That's correct.
So I, my comment is, I believe that folks, when they see these two lines, they say, oh, that's a crosswalk. They may have a tendency to slow down because someone is in the crosswalk. And if it's been there for forty to fifty years, I think that would be a habit that's hard to break. However, since it is an uncontrolled intersection, and there are no existing signs, I'm wondering, why do we need it? It's just a comment. I'm a believer of full and complete transparency. I received information that you have contacted the owners in the area to include providing notices, and you've sent it twice, at the second time, to include on different colored papers so that it will be noticed. I feel that transparency is the key for our constituents and our community. I feel that you've done your job to the best of your ability in notifying the folks. There's only so much that this city can do. I think we put it out there before that if any interested person wants to know about certain issues, all they have to do is either contact the city clerk, put their name on the list, and every time a meeting comes up pertaining to any particular issue, they will be notified. I think that's the best that we can do. So I wanted to say thank you for answering my questions, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. I have a speaker card, Von Jones. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. I will address Councilman Sylvester first. I was on that list to be notified as president of the homeowners' association for the West Side for some twenty years. Both John Martin and Pat Martel always saw to it that I was notified of any change in my neighborhood. This seems to have fallen through the cracks with this new administration. So I hope we can resolve that, and I will be more carefully notified in the future. Motorists on that steep hill, don't slow down and stop to read a little sign that the city has tacked up to a phone pole. Maybe you did send letters to the people who live in that immediate neighborhood. I don't happen to have homeowner association board members who live close to there, so we missed it. I would have had people at the meeting in the training room had I known that that was going to occur. On the actual issue of the crosswalk, I think people are going to continue to cross there whether you remove the lines or not, because it leads from the park across the street. They're not gonna walk a block up to Montebello and Longview on a steep hill that is damp and foggy to cross at Montebello. They're gonna cross at the, right there anyway. So you can argue the safety issue in a number of different ways, I guess. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let me see. All right. Do we take both at the same time?
Yes, one resolution.
One resolution, okay. Is there a motion to amend traffic regulations to install the two-meter parking spaces and to remove the crosswalk on Longview Drive in, at Longview Park? Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, so we're considering both, to clarify.
Yes.
All right, so there's no discussion on the meter aspect? No, I don't have a comment. I just wanted to confirm. Okay, got you.
So I'll make the motion as to both. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye.
Mr. Bruno Ventura.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Did we want to revisit the minutes or no?
Why didn't we do it for clarification?
Okay, so we just wanted to clarify that we approved the minutes of the last meeting of August twelfth. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the minutes are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's go on to public hearings. Item number, I'm sorry, yeah, item number fifteen is the appeal of the administrative use permit of Chang Sin Cemetery at zero Longford Drive in Daly City. Ms. Morales. Good evening.
My name is Carmela Somaralas, and I'll be presenting on the Appeal of Administrative Use Permit, AUP dash zero-one dash nineteen dash one-three-eight-six-five. And it's a wireless facility project at zero Longford Drive in Daly City. Some background information, the planning division did approve this project on May tenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the approval did include renewal of AUP zero-nine-twenty-six, which is, which was a previous renewal from an original use permit approved in two thousand and one. So the wireless facility has been there since two thousand and one. And the current use permit is, current use permit is valid until July twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The approval also includes the replacement of the existing flagpole, which contains the wireless facility, and replacing it with a monopane wireless facility. Both will be the same height, which is forty feet tall. And on May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, the project was appealed, or the approval was appealed by Mrs. Markopolos. I'm sorry if I said that incorrectly. This slide shows the project site. It is located at the eastern corner of Chang Sin Cemetery and also abutting the South San Francisco jurisdiction at the northern end of Longford Drive. There's just a couple of photos here that show where the existing facility is located. This is from Gina Perisera. This is from the northern end of Longford Drive. You can see the nearest residence to the left and the existing facility to the right, so that little white sliver against the trees. This is another viewpoint from Longford Drive. Straight across is the existing facility. This is a site plan, which shows the project area. Within the perforated square, you could see the small circle to the left, which is the existing facility, and the, to the left, the larger circle is the proposed facility and the equipment area that will remain and will service the new proposed facility. Some things to note here is that the proposed facility is approximately thirty feet away from the existing facility, and both are approximately a hundred thirty feet or so away from the nearest residents. This is in a large version of the site plan, which shows more depth the proposed and existing facilities as well as the equipment area. None of the equipment is expected to change, except for the rerouting of the cables, which is to connect the proposed facility to the equipment area. And here is a rendering of the existing and proposed elevations. As you can tell, the design is changing significantly. The design is, the current design is a flagpole, and the new design is supposed to lower the visual impact in that, in the surrounding environment. And here are some photo simulations, which shows the existing facility and the proposed facility. I've put in red where the proposed facility will be located. And based on the design, as you can see, there is less visual impact. And in this slide, I will briefly discuss the reasons for appeal indicated by the appellant in their appeal letter that was submitted on the last day of the appeal period. So the first point was that the, there was a wrong permit number cited in the approval letter, and that has since been corrected and is reflected in Attachment F in the staff report. The second point is that the proposal does not qualify for CEQA Categorical Exemption, Section fifteen-three-oh-two. Upon review during the application process and after the appeal was filed, staff still continues to, still continues and determines that the removal of the existing facility and replacement is still constitutes a replacement of the facility at the general same location, which still complies with the criteria for this exemption. The third point is that the applicant has not submitted all the required information. There are a few items that were not submitted with the application that the city has, that was able to waive because it considered it not necessary, or was submitted in the past or we already have a record of it. Some examples of that include a list of all existing wireless facilities within city limits. The city does have a record of that. And then there were also, there was also a requirement for information on the site selection process. Since this was a replacement, it was not considered necessary. The site plan shows existing landscaping, and there's no landscaping proposed for removal, so a landscaping plan was not considered necessary. And lastly, in regards to the noise and acoustical information for the proposed equipment, there is no new equipment proposed, nor are any being replaced. Further, there are no emergency generators on the site, which is known to cause some noise impacts. And since none of these are proposed, it was not, no noise impacts were anticipated. Based on what staff has found, it was determined that the information submitted was satisfactory. The fourth and fifth point are related to the previous approved use permit. One is that there was a requirement that annual EMF reports be submitted after the approval. To the city's knowledge, there were no, any reports submitted. However, in two thousand and ten, when the, when AOP oh-nine dash twenty-six was being reviewed, there was an RF report submitted, which stated that the proposed facility will comply with FCC standards. And in addition to, during this current application process, there were two RF reports submitted, and all came with the same results. And the last point of the appellant was that the use permit currently has already expired. However, based on review of the approval letter, it actually will expire in two thousand and twenty with a ten-year expiration date. And this slide shows the findings that were made by the planning division in support of the approval of the project, which includes exemption from CEQA, signing and design, and compliance with FCC standards. Lastly, our in conclusion, staff recommends to the City Council that they deny the appeal request and uphold the approval of the permit, subject to the modified conditions and findings. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let me open the public hearing on this item, and let me just tell the folks that are involved, the organization of the presentation. So we're gonna have, is it, is it Brian Gaffney? Okay, Mr. Gaffney, we're gonna have you go first on behalf of your client Cynthia Markopolis. You'll have four minutes, and then we're gonna have, is it Joe Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, you're gonna go next. You're, on behalf of Crown Castle, you're gonna have four minutes. After that, we're gonna go switch back to Mr. Gaffney. You'll have an additional two minutes for rebuttal. And then, Mr. Parker, you go back again for another two minutes. And then we're gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna see if we have any questions and public comment on the issue, and then we're gonna decide. Sounds fair? All right, let me start with Mr. Gaffney. Whenever you're ready, four minutes.
Welcome, by the way. Just gonna set my timer here. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Brian Gaffney for the appellant Cynthia Markopolis. Daly City has a telecommunications facility ordinance, and when one looks at that ordinance, the stated purpose is to have a uniform set of standards. And here... And here, the standards are not being applied uniformly. The requirements, which staff does not contest, have not been complied with, include that there be an explanation letter submitted with the application that explains the other sites that were considered and why they were rejected. Now, this would be a benefit to the city council, to the applicant, and to the public to have this explanation, but it doesn't exist. It was not submitted. In addition, there's a requirement that the applicant submit a map of the coverage area of existing facilities. No such map was ever submitted. What Ms. Morales just said is that a list is maintained by the city, a list which has not been provided to the applicant despite her Public Records Act request. And even if there was such a list, that would not constitute a map showing coverage. We may hear tonight from the applicant, from Crown Castle, that they need this for coverage, but we don't have any evidence in front of us about what the coverage needs actually are. In addition, in regards to a landscape plan, there was no landscape plan submitted. Now, there are pictures that were taken recently that shows the site being recently mowed and looking very clean. However, Ms. Markopolis, when she provides her testimony, will tell you about how the site has looked over the years, and she has submitted to the city clerk pictures and videos of what the landscaping has actually looked like. The provision in Daly City's ordinance, 17.39.050, talks about locations, and it bears reading. In part, it says that facilities should avoid sites near residential areas unless the applicant includes information sufficient to demonstrate the type of preferred sites which exist and good faith efforts and measures were taken to secure preferred location sites. So Ms. Markopolis believes that this application needs to be denied. And the applicant's free to come forward with meeting municipal code provisions, but right now, it hasn't done so. Instead, we've been told that these conditions have been waived. But when we did a Public Records Act request, we didn't see any evidence of such a letter of waiver from the Director of Economic Development. Let me turn to the CEQA provision. The CEQA provision, normally the process, as you well know, is an initial study is done, and then there's a decision of a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR. Here, you're being asked to exempt all that, no environmental review. And what they're claiming is that there's no expansion or negligible expansion of capacity. Currently, there's two antenna panels. What's proposed is six new antennas, nine new remote radio heads, and six new conjunction cylinders. The, there were two reports that were submitted, both in 2019, and one of them talks about the wattage for the nine new antennas is 15,000 new watts. So this is definitely an increase in capacity. So for that reason, we ask that the city deny the application. And in addition, I know over time, is there was supposed to be annual reports submitted every year. That never happened.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Joe Parker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
You may.
Buenaventura, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joe Parker. I'm counsel for Crown Castle, the owner and operator of the facility that's before you tonight. Very briefly, I submitted a letter that addresses all of the issues that were raised in the appeal. I won't go there again. But just quickly to describe what's going on here, this is a 40-foot facility that's being replaced with a 40-foot facility that will become a monopine. The reason for that is simply because the equipment that is being placed onto this facility, which is intended to upgrade and enhance service to the constituents, cannot be fit on a flagpole design and still maintain the stealth features. The proposed design does meet your municipal code, and there is no issue with respect to that. Council has raised the issue about certain items being missing from the record. That is simply a decision by staff as to what they require for an application. So, for example, alternative site analysis is not done for a replacement facility in the same location. It's done for new construction facilities. So this site was actually sited with RF objectives in mind, specifically when it was built. The surrounding facilities around this location will not provide the same coverage, and therefore it becomes an irrelevant issue. I'll also point that this is a critical site for your city. It does provide a fair amount of coverage in that location, including E911 and 911 coverage, which is significant, since 75% of phone calls, 911 phone calls are made from wireless facilities. With respect to the point about RF coverage, as the council knows, this is an area regulated by the FCC. We must show compliance within the limits imposed by the FCC. We've submitted multiple RF reports. Two are consists of modeling that is done by Hammond Edison, a respected RF engineering company, which not only produces reports for the private industry, but also for public agencies. We have representatives here that can speak to those issues, should you have technical questions about that. Importantly, the facility operates at about 2% of the maximum standard. If you use the modeling standard, we had an RF engineer go out there today and do actual studies. It's operating at a little about, around 5% of the minimum or maximum standard imposed by the FCC. So we're well within the limits. With respect to the CEQA exemption, it's black letter law. This is a Class II exemption for replacement of a facility that is in the same location or general location as the existing facility. That's Section 15302 of the CEQA guidelines. I noted that council made an argument that this should be treated as a new facility. If it was, it would still be subject to a CEQA exemption under the Class III exemption. So again, not a legal issue that is worth spending more time on. With respect to the annual reports, admittedly, when this facility or permit was issued back in 2010, there was a condition, ironically came as a result of an appeal to city council from the same appellant that is here tonight. She, city council required annual RF submission, or annual reports be submitted. That did not occur. I will tell you that 10 years ago, submitting annual reports was somewhat of an unusual request. It did not get loaded into the system, and unfortunately, we did not comply with that. We have done that since that time. The equipment hasn't changed since its operation in 2010, and the reports that we've submitted, again, demonstrate that we're well within the federal guidelines and quite low by ordinary standards. So my apologies for not following that directive from city council. It won't happen again. My client is a national leader in providing wireless infrastructure and prides itself on being a good neighbor and a good permitee, and will make sure that we submit those reports. And I note that staff's report has action in there, which includes revocation of the permit if we fail to do so. Lastly, I think the other points that have been raised by staff don't require much discussion, so I'll leave it at that. But I will just ask you to deny the appeal and let us commence with replacement of this facility, which will greatly benefit the business invitees, constituents, and residents of your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Gaffney, you have two minutes rebuttal.
As to the point as replacement, there being a waiver of the conditions of the municipal code, there's nothing in your municipal code that makes such a distinction. This is a rationale that's only been released with the staff report that came out on Friday. There's nothing in your code that talks about a different way of dealing with this for replacement. Two, council's mention of alternative sites, you have no analysis, as you would have if you required the simple requirement that they provide the explanation. You don't know what the alternative sites are, and neither does the public. As for the radio frequency coverage, two were done in 2019. There should have been nine. It was supposed to be the grounds for revocation of a permit. You're being told that you can revoke the permit in the future, but this entity hasn't complied with it before. Even though, we don't dispute that the two that were produced in 2019 don't show a violation, you have no knowledge about what happened in those other years where they chose not to submit the reports. There's been no analysis of cumulative impacts. And the report, one of the reports that was done, the one that was done just last month by Hammond, makes the statement that there are no other nearby sites, and that's completely wrong. In South San Francisco, in July, affecting the same neighborhood, South San Francisco put in another cell phone tower. It's only a block away, and the Hammond report makes a statement that as if that didn't happen. The CEQA Provision 15302 is not for replacements. It's for replacements where there's no or negligible increase in capacity. And we have the information about 15,000 additional wattage. It is the purpose of this new facility to increase capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Mr. Parker.
Just thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just briefly, with respect to alternative site analysis, it's important to remember that this is not a new facility. This is simply an upgrade of existing equipment with the same carrier that has been operating there since inception of this facility. So there would be no need to do alternative site analysis, as I've pointed out. These are coverage RF-specific sites, which infill coverage from specific geographic locations. If you go to a different location, you do not maintain the same RF coverage. And again, it's traditional and customary in this area not to require alternative site analysis when you're simply upgrading a facility. The distinction here is that we're doing what we call a drop and swap, meaning replacing the existing facility with a new facility in order to accommodate the equipment. That's the only change. The substantial expansion, as referred to as by council, is an environmental impact issue. It does not go to wattage or equipment. And the case law is fairly clear about that. There's a recent case right out of San Diego where they found that even new facilities constructed in a park are going to be subject to the Class III exemption, so it shouldn't be an issue for you. With respect to coverage maps, they're in your file. Again, we are simply enhancing the coverage. You have the existing coverage with overlays over that, so we've made that finding. And lastly, the issue with respect to cumulative findings, that's just flatly wrong. We have an RF engineer here who's a senior executive with Hammond Edison. He is the author of those reports, has personal knowledge, has gone to the facility himself. He can answer those questions about the cumulative nature, but staff does agree with us that that information is indeed contained in that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I have one speaker card. Cynthia Markopolis. Ms. Markopolis?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Cynthia Markopolis. Thank you for this opportunity. Neither you nor the public has been provided with a letter explaining the site selection process, including the information about other sites that were considered and the reasons for their rejection. Neither the city council nor the public can determine the need for increased coverage without a map illustrating the estimated coverage area for all existing and proposed antenna sites for the service provider. There has been no cumulative impact analysis. The July 25, 2019 Hammond report is incorrect in claiming that there are reported no other wireless telecommunications base stations at the site or nearby. There is another wireless facility going in right now, a block away, and Hammond was the engineer that prepared that report this year. Also, when this permit was first issued, we came to the meeting and we asked the representatives of the Sprint and Crown Castle why it wasn't installed further away, because there's three cemeteries further away, closer to Ceremony Boulevard, and they said they just didn't think of it. Now, Crown Castle and Sprint have not complied with the terms of the 2010 permit, as they have not submitted annual RF reports showing they were in compliance with the FCC regulations. They have submitted two reports, while nine reports should have been prepared to meet the 2010 permit requirement. Without the required reports, no one knows whether or not the existing facility was in compliance with FCC regulations for RF standards over the years. It is not incumbent upon the Daly City Planning Department to babysit Crown Castle and Sprint to make sure they are in compliance. The landowner does not maintain the trees or the road or clean the debris. A few years ago, San Mateo Supervisor David Canapa, then sitting as a member of this city council, visited the Chang Sein Cemetery with a few neighbors and our homeowners association president to see firsthand, may I please just, I just have a few.
Rub it up.
To see firsthand that the trees behind our homes and the road are deteriorated, Supervisor Canapa then ordered Daly City Engineering to do a study on the overgrown trees. If this council denies my appeal, then I respectfully ask that the fake tree, Crown Castle, and Sprint seek to install remain at the same location as the flagpole, so we, the neighbors, can view it and keep an eye on it for any malfunction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Markopolis. Do I have any questions from the members of the council to the attorneys that are present? Any questions? Hearing no questions, let me close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I do have one question.
To who?
I guess it would be our staff, probably.
Okay. Go ahead.
When they were saying that there'd been only two reports, and that they were behind on all the other reports, so how long, a city attorney, I guess you would know that? How many reports did they miss?
Back in 2010, when it was a condition of approval to have the annual reports, and then they updated the reports, I mean, they didn't follow the condition as they had admitted. However, it isn't really a requirement federally to have annual reports.
Oh.
But they do need to show compliance with the FCC standard, which I believe they have in the current reports.
Okay. And the other question was the part about, let's see, that was an accumulation. Let's see, how many years? Two out of four? About the alternative sites. Is that required or not required to provide that?
So the wireless ordinance has some conditions that is waivable by the Director of Economic and Community Development. So it didn't state necessarily that you had to have an express waiver. However, it's assumed, since it wasn't required as part of the application, that that was waived. Essentially, I think, and I'll have planning speak to that, essentially, it's waived because it's in the same site. It's a replacement of an existing site, so they didn't have alternative map requirement as a result of it.
So do we know how many of those are in that area? Do we know?
At this time, we don't know, but we can look that up.
Yeah. But we don't, right now, we don't know how many are in that area.
The surrounding area? No. The propagation maps that were submitted could kind of give you a picture as to what other coverage is nearby, but the exact locations, we'd have to do some research on that.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? A motion to close the public, oh, go ahead.
Just a comment. So earlier, the question was, the exact location, the new proposed, is it going to be in the exact location as the previous pole or flagpole, right?
It's in generally the same location. It's about 30 feet west, so further into the trees, the area where the trees are located.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Get a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any final staff or city council questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just basically wanted to make a comment based upon what I've heard from both sides. But before I do so, who owns the land?
The land is owned by, I'm not sure of the name, but it's the Chang Sein Cemetery.
It's the trust of David Lou, who passed away, and passed it on to his daughter, who owns all the property that goes on. David Lou.
Go ahead.
So the city does not have any control as to the upkeep and the landscaping of the land, is that correct?
I believe we would be able to request that our Code Enforcement Division go out and inspect the property to.
Sure.
To investigate.
Got you. I'm also concerned about these annual reports that they did. the past couple of years they have, so I'm hoping moving forward that this won't be a problem. I appreciate about landscaping and having that as a condition for later on in the future. What I'm also concerned is, I kind of believe what I've heard in that it was termed, "Oh, we didn't think of it." Maybe that did happen, but now, this is a new time. And I think, and I'm kind of curious myself, then we have a play on words, new site versus replacement, and then we're going to have back and forth based upon the terminology that's being used here, and here it's just a replacement. If it was a new site, I'm sure it would be under different circumstances. However, alternative sites to which was never acted upon, that's also a concern to me for full and complete transparency. What are the alternative sites, if any? And if they do not fit, okay, fine. At least we have the documentation that shows alternative sites and that it was done. So that's another concern that I have as well, and based upon the decision that's made tonight, I'm hoping either way that we will obtain this information on alternative sites. So let's see, we got the landscaping, new site versus replacement, didn't think of it, alternative sites. What happened in previous years for reports? Okay, I mentioned about that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Upon the reporting that was requested years ago, and now, I think there is another condition if they don't report. I'd like to know and clarify exactly what that is moving forward. What is, what is the exact verbiage or-
Different condition.
As a condition? Because I know that it was a condition of approval in the past, but obviously it wasn't kind of a, there was no repercussions, I mean, it wasn't annually given, so I know moving forward, there's an earnest desire to do so. Just wanted to know, I know that there's stipulations that are now indicated moving forward, and I'd just like to know what that language is, please.
Yeah. Okay. I can go in and read that to you. So condition 18 currently is, "An annual EMF (RF) report that demonstrates the facility continues to meet the FCC requirements shall be submitted to the planning division on or before the anniversary date of the use permit. Failure to submit the required report may result in revocation of the use permit." Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that's in the condition.
Any other questions? Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm staring at these photos here, and I just learned a new word today, and that's monopine. Does that mean like, I'm thinking of a pine tree, and I'm looking on the right-hand side, and it looks like a tree?
Right.
So, and if it, and if it meets EMF, it's within the boundaries or the, whatever has been determined as safe, that looks better than a pole. So, the proposed, it looks like it's, looks like a tree to me. It's just my comment, that's all. But, Mr. Mayor, I am concerned about the future landscaping and maintenance and upkeep. Instead of cleaning it up just when it's coming before council, I'm concerned about that as well. So I'd like to make that a condition.
So how do we address that? How would you suggest?
We can add a condition related to maintaining landscaping. I'm not sure if you want any photographic evidence yearly, but just putting the responsibility on the applicant to maintain the area.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So, so let's make a decision on this. The recommended action is to deny the appeal request and uphold the approval, subject to the modified conditions, which include maintaining landscaping, is what I heard. Anything else?
Yeah, the other, the other one is alternative sites, and I think also, didn't you put another one, the condition that you read back?
The condition that I read was, is already included in the staff report.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
It's already included.
It's included already, yeah.
Okay. Is there, who wants to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you call the question? Madam City Attorney?
My understanding is, there's a proposed motion on the table with regards to denying the appeal, affirming the approval of the administrative use permit with the modified condition to include the landscaping maintenance upon the applicant. I'm unclear as to any modifications with regards to the alternative map, analysis map, or if that was a comment that was made, not necessarily a condition.
That's what I asked. Vice Mayor as well.
Why don't you clarify exactly?
I'll let Vice Mayor, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. How long is this permit good for?
The permit is for 10 years.
All right. I think to satisfy the conditions that was placed in 2010, to which the point of contention is that alternative sites had not been undertaken, I would ask that at least the applicant considers or provides a report on alternate sites for the record.
I support that. I support that.
I'll include in the modified conditions that it does include alternative, proof of alternative sites to be established, it's part of the reporting and record.
Okay. So are we clear?
Crystal.
Crystal clear?
Yeah. So, is there a second on the motion?
Who's making the motion?
I am.
Second.
Okay. So, we need a roll call? Roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to item number 16 under Communications, which is to authorize designation of voting delegate and alternate delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, October 16 through 18. Ms. Malby?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, the League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled for October 16th through the 18th in Long Beach, and an important part of that conference is the business meeting that's scheduled on that Friday. To participate in an official voting member of the league at the annual business meeting, the city does need to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternatives to officially cast ballots on resolutions that may be considered at the business meeting that would establish league policy. So it is recommended tonight that the city council select and designate a voting delegate and up to two alternatives to participate in this annual business meeting.
Great. So who's going?
I believe you're all going.
We're going, but I'm leaving early.
Oh, you're, so you can't vote?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor is going?
Vice Mayor.
It's Vice Mayor and-
Justin and myself.
Okay, so those are the three. So who wants to be the delegate and who wants to be the alternate delegates? Who's going to all the sessions?
I am.
Okay.
I'm at all the sessions, but I defer to-
Okay. So let's make a motion to nominate the Vice Mayor to be our delegate to the conference. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none? Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor. So let's go with our alternate, so-
I'd like to nominate Justin Manalo.
Okay, so we have-
Second.
Motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, Ms. Manalo. We have one more left.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Pam Di Giovanni.
For what?
Can I get a second?
I need three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none? Congratulations, ladies. All right. So item number, is that all we have to do for that item?
That's it. Thank you.
Number 17, which is the minor subdivision at Vista Grande Avenue. Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Buena Ventura and council members. The next item before you this evening is the minor subdivision for 489 Vista Grande Avenue. The applicant proposes to subdivide an existing 5,503-square-foot corner lot into two lots. The proposal would result in two lots, Lot A of 2,971 square feet and Lot B of 2,532 square feet in area. The existing home on proposed Lot A would remain, fronting on Vista Grande Avenue, while the new Lot B would front on Willetts Street. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of Vista Grande Avenue and Willetts This photo shows the existing condition of, taken from Vista Grande Avenue as viewed from the corner of Vista Grande and Willetts Street. And this slide shows the full existing lot as viewed from Willetts Street. And this photo shows the portion of the existing lot that will become Lot B as viewed from Willetts Street. Staff conducted a site visit actually earlier this afternoon, and we noticed that the existing single-family home on Lot A has its required parking access in that parking pad visible from the photo there, but it is not meeting the minimum dimensions for two-car parking spaces. So staff is adding, proposing adding a condition that would read, "The applicant shall extend the existing driveway to 17 feet wide in order to provide the required two stalls for the existing single-family dwelling." This slide shows a parcel map drawn up with the lot lines, the new lot lines to be put The project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15315 Minor Land Divisions. While no development is proposed for the site at this time, the general plan encourages the development of infill housing in existing neighborhoods on sites that are underutilized, where residential development represents the highest and best use, and where public infrastructure exists to support the intensity of the proposed development. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the minor subdivision for 489 Vista Grande Avenue. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. How many bedrooms and bathrooms that's proposed for the new unit?
So there is no new unit proposed on the property. This application is only to place a lot line dividing the two properties. The zoning of the property would allow the applicants to come in with a building permit to build a single-family dwelling and meet the zoning ordinance, but this application, no development is proposed.
Very good. I mean, I, I mean, I'm sure when the developer is ready to build, that it's going to come before planning, and based upon what you said, it's got to meet all the requirements for-
Parking.
For, yeah, parking as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Peyton.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none? Can I get a-
Motion to approve?
A resolution by roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 18, which is Use Permit and Design Review of 6098 Mission Street Mixed Use Building.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a permit renewal of a use permit and design review approval granted previously by the city council. It is for a 36-unit mixed-use building at the northeast corner of Mission Street in Gothy, 6098 Mission is the address. Again, the same exact project, more or less, was approved by the city council in October 2017. The approval expired one year later, and the applicant to continue with the project is required to renew the application. The same public hearing notice that was sent out in 2017 was sent out for tonight's public hearing. The proposal is a 36-unit mixed-use apartment building on an approximately 10,800-square-foot site. 21 studio apartments and 15 two-bedroom apartments are proposed. At the street level, a 1,600-square-foot non-residential retail office component is proposed. The only change to the project from the 2017 approval that the city council would be approving tonight is the way that the 46 parking spaces in the garage would be provided. In the current proposal, 39 of these parking spaces would be accessed by a parklift system. The city council's reviewed and approved these sorts of systems before, so it's not anything new in terms of what the council would be considering and approving. The open space for the project is provided in decks at the upper floors of the building. There's a lot merger of two parcels that's required, and the existing billboard that's at the site would be, of course, removed upon construction of the building. Again, the site's at the northeast corner of Gothy and Mission Street. The context for the site is, again, the, across the street is Walgreens, there are a number of retail, mixed-use, and residential buildings in the vicinity. It's more residential, there's a sort of strip mall-type use across the street to the east. This is a photograph of the existing site. The existing transit facility in front of the building would not be affected by the proposal. The billboard that you see at the right side of the screen would be removed. These are the floor plans showing the ground-level retail and the ground-level parking that would be installed as part of the building. These slides just show the levels of the building as we move up, second, third, fourth, and fifth floor plan, and the sixth as well. Roof plan showing open space areas for residents to enjoy open space. This is an architectural rendering of the proposed building, has not changed since the 2017 approval. The project is subject to the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance, and this project would pay a housing impact fee as part of that. This is the same requirement that was installed in the 2017 approval. The site's undergone remediation from having underground storage tanks on it. The county's closed the case. The project is and continues to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it is an infill development project. There are findings that are included in the staff report for the council to make should it desire to approve the project, and we are recommending that the city council do so, approve the use permit and design review specifically. If there's any questions, the applicant's here, as well as the staff's available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any questions? All right, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I do have a question in regards to the in-lug fee that's being provided for the affordable housing. Is it grandfathered from when we approved it, or are they subject to what we approved recently?
Well, they would be subject to the previous affordable housing plan that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have a concern. My concern is, we need to light a fire. We can't keep approving or extending a previous permit because I think it dilutes the importance of having the permit in the first place. There are other outstanding circumstances, such as maybe finances and et cetera, but if we keep bringing this before Council for extension, extension, the community changes. And I remember when this came up before Council, folks were complaining about how the sun and the shadow falls on the other homes in the area. And we need to get the developer to get moving and basically start working on this. We have enacted a new housing affordability plan and be grandfathered in. If we shoot for another approval, say, two years from now, well, nope, they're still grandfathered under the old one in 2015 and 2016. And we wait another five years, well, no, they're still grandfathered. I'm hoping that the developer gets moving on this, and if I'm here on Council and it comes for renewal again, I'm going to be hesitant. I'm just letting you folks know that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I just want to remember, if I remember correctly, I could be, is this the one where there was a problem with either a pipe or something? That's why they had a little delay? Is that the project or another one? There was something on it that...
It doesn't sound familiar.
It's probably another project, so, yeah.
I remember Councilmember De Giovanni says, "Yeah, no smoking and no barbecue."
Yeah, you remember that, right? On the planning, you were there. Remember that?
Yeah, I remember this project.
This project is in plan check. They've submitted an application for a building permit. We have a big roll of plans that...
Yeah, and there was a beautiful design where you did the trellises at the top. No barbecue.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, one last question, Mr. Mayor. What's the total in-lug fee amount that go to our affordable housing trust?
I don't know that that's actually specified in the staff report.
Just trying to find it.
Sometimes we do put it in the staff report, and sometimes we don't.
If it's not here, then we can get it from staff after, but moving forward, I'd appreciate having the impact fees or what the affordable housing is in development.
Certainly, that's not a problem.
Appreciate it.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Great, good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Let me now go to Public Appearances, Oral Communications. I have one speaker card, and only one, and so let me call up Joshua Kim.
Hello, before I start, I would like to give out this flyer.
Sure.
Get a better visual.
Thank you.
So my name is Joshua from the International Youth Fellowship, an international nonprofit, five oh one C three organization. The I Y F strives to deliver happiness and joy to our communities around the world using musical arts, dance performances, leadership buildups, team leader exercises, mental, physical, and spiritual development. So currently, this fall, we are presenting the award-winning Gracias Choir and Orchestra to stage Christmas Cantada in twenty-nine different cities of North America. On September twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, seven PM at Cow Palace in Daly City, the Gracias Choir and Orchestra is inviting all of Northern California communities to the world, famous Gracias Christmas Cantada. So you may request your free e-tickets, free, at their website here. So the Gracias Christmas Cantada is a showstopping musical event that has been performed in venues like the Sydney Opera House and Madison Square Garden, as well as many other stages around the world. With three beautiful music-filled stages and one eternal message of hope, Gracias Christmas Cantada instills in the audiences the true meaning of Christmas, which is the birth of hope, love, and God's forgiveness in our hearts. So in this time, we would love to give awareness to as many people as we can, especially to the community here in Daly City. If you have any recommendations, we are open to all of that. We are also seeking of the following. We are actually currently recruiting volunteers who are interested in wanting to host, manage, and operate the Christmas Cantada here in Daly City. And also in the Bay Area. So if you know any organizations and/or/or communities, I'm almost done, who hunger to sacrifice their precious time and effort for the communities, please give your recommendations, either email or on the phone, telephone, that is given here on the pamphlets. So that is all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and waiting all this time.
Thank you.
Is this your contact information in the back?
Yes.
Direct?
It's not mine, but my director's direct contact information, so you can actually call him or her.
Are you from this area as well?
Actually, I am from the Los Angeles area, and I'm actually here as a volunteer in the Bay Area to help with this cantada.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other speaker cards. Let me go on to appointments to boards or commission, any appointments? Hearing none, let me go on to reports, council committee reports. Any council committee reports? Meetings August twelfth through September eighth? Hearing none, how about city council reports? City council reports? Go ahead, Dr. Rod.
I attended a PCE meeting, potential clean energy, and there's a few things that they, some announcements they had. They have electronic vehicles test drive tomorrow in downtown Redwood City, corner of Winslow and Hamilton Street. Also, they have electronic vehicle testing at Burlingame Fall Fest, either October twenty-six or October twenty-seventh. And then I'll be also attending the PCE board retreat Saturday, September twenty-eighth, pretty much all morning, till eight AM to one PM.
Great, is that all?
Is this where we could do announcements and everything?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Also, there is an event tomorrow. It's in collaboration with Youth Leadership Institute and Faith in Action that will be at Woodrow Wilson Elementary, called Grounded in Daly City, from six thirty to nine PM. Also, there's applicants out there, so those that want to be involved politically. It's called the Board and Commission Leadership Institute by the Urban Habitat, which trains and supports leaders from low-income communities and communities of color to advance equitable policies as advocate commissioners. The program begins with intensive six-month training that provides fellows with a framework to deepen their understanding about housing, transportation, and land use issues through different frameworks. And that application is due Sunday, October twentieth. Also, Westmore High School's Barcada/Malaya is sponsoring a benefit concert for one of my friends that I went to school with, from San Francisco State, Brandon Lee, who's a human rights activist in the Philippines, who was shot and is still fighting for his life. It's a benefit concert as a way to fundraise for his medical bills, but also to hopefully have him come back to the States. And then I guess October third is also the Free From Violence event sponsored by Alice. It talks about domestic violence education on Thursday, October third, five PM to seven PM, here. So that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else?
You want to go first?
Okay, thank you. Just some city council reports on August twenty-fourth with Mayor Buena Ventura. I caught the tail end, but the Know Your Rights event was at Hillside, which is really important to let immigrants know their rights, and also the updates around immigration policy since it's constantly changing. So that was great. Also, on the same evening, I went to support a local business that is, what do you call it? They're registered here, and it's Papa Lowdown, and they are a boutique PR firm of ten years and really community-based, so is able to support their ten-year anniversary. And then lastly, with the mayor and the council, on September seventh, just very recently, had the gun buyback at City Hall.
Excellent, great, go ahead.
Also, I'd like to add to that because Mayor Manalo and Vice Mayor, we attended the firefighter's pinning ceremony at the Lake Merced. We had new recruits for firefighters, and they were pinned, and Captain Nick Dole also received his pinning as well. I also attended the Know Your Rights, and what I found very interesting is that they were very well, their knowledge was incredible, they did Facebook Live, and one of the biggest changes was the public charge that seems to be affecting a lot of the immigrants filling out paperwork. So I think that's also been a big impact. I'd like to announce that on nine eleven, at the morning of Engine Ninety-Five, this will be the first observance, and it'll be led by the firefighters. So it changed the schedule a little bit, and the last schedule that they picked, this is all they're leading, is that it's going to, they're going to open the Engine Ninety-Five at eight AM. They themselves have bought some coffee and some donuts, but if the community can bring something to mingle together, and then the ceremony itself will begin at eight-thirty, and there'll be remembrance. And also, we have included our police department, with Lee has coordinated with the firefighters today, and it'll be a smaller thing this year, but we hope to grow as we get together. And I want to say that over the weekend, a couple little bumps were in the way, and I want to give our city manager a lot of credit, and she's been able to address them and has been supportive of this nine eleven event, and I really appreciate it, and the firefighters and police do as well. So I know that she said she was coming too, so. So if anybody can come and bring anything, and eight forty-five, it's going to be eight forty-six when the first plane hits. And hopefully next year, I'll be able to have the police color guard, it's going to be the following year. So really, the colleagues, they look forward to hopefully you guys being there, and this will be something that means a lot to them. And I know that public safety, especially for our Vice Mayor and all of them, this council, seem to be our focus, one of our main focuses, so that's that event.
Okay, thank you, Ms. De Giovanni. Mr. Vice Mayor?
This one's going to be pretty quick, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I want to get a foot ahead of our city manager, Ms. Malp, because she called someone up who was unsuspecting, and I like to do the same, so I'd like to wish the Director of ECD, Ms. Tatum's mother's head, happy birthday. Her as well. You know, staff, staff, they could be somewhere else on this night, and to be here at this time, and I don't know, it just happened, it had to happen on a Tuesday, I mean, Monday when there's a council meeting, but happy birthday, Ms. Mother's Head.
Happy birthday.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we should start a tradition.
But no singing.
Saying birthdays at the end of our meeting.
Rebecca's here too, and you passed your bedtime.
Go ahead, Ms. Manalo, go ahead.
One last thing, the Basca report was for the last meeting, for the record to be sent into the city clerk, and so it wasn't in the previous meeting, so then I'd like it to be in this meeting so that the public can know about what's going on with the Basca meeting previously. So we'll send that over if you can please note that in to the record. Thank you.
How about this one?
Also, we did have an update on Sedan Hospital. There was a meeting with Attorney General who went to Colma Community Center, and the council was there to speak on the importance of keeping the institution as acute hospital, also ensuring that, you know, the workers remain, and also to ensure that the services that are important to the community within that institution is considered when the AG makes its decisions. And so that happened also very recently, and full support of the council going there during the day. It was from early in the morning, from nine to twelve, one o'clock PM. It was on August twenty-ninth, and so I think you'll be able to also get the information from the Attorney Generals, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we are now at the point of adjourning in memory. We have several people. Let me start with the Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Basically, you're a part of this also. I'd like to acknowledge and adjourn this meeting in honor of Alice Lamb. She was seventy years old, and she peacefully entered the Lord's presence on the twenty-first of July. She is the beloved wife of George Lamb, devoted mother of Winnie, Henry, Virginia, Elizabeth, and Alex, and mother-in-law of Brian Newian. What makes her special is the both of them, and to raise a family with so many children, she definitely will be sorely missed. Not only did they raise a family, but the philanthropic things that they have done for the city of San Francisco and Daly City will not be forgotten. So I would like to acknowledge Ms. Alice Lamb. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In memory of Gina Lopez, at sixty-five years old, she was a Filipino philanthropist as well and environmentalist. She died after battling brain cancer. Lopez was a longtime chairperson of the ABS-CBN Foundation and former Environment Secretary. Lopez was the sister of ABS-CBN Chairman Emeritus Gabi Lopez and daughter of Capitan Eugenio Lopez Jr., and really made an impact in serving the impoverished children in the Philippines, and as mentioned, also a huge environmental activist. Also, Angel P. Reyes, which is the grandfather of Jaclyn Bernaby Solanga.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to close in memory of Tyson Victor. He was only seventeen years old when he passed, and his sister, Jaslyn Lamedora, said that he was sweet, kind, and loving, and loved by many, and will be missed. I also like to close in the remembrance of all the three hundred and forty-three firefighters and the law enforcement that perished, and the victims of nine eleven, and that we needed to start remembering and take stock. And even though it's been eighteen years ago, that it's very important that we remember these people, and some are perishing every day from the effects of nine eleven. Thank you.
Dr. Rod?
We also want to close on behalf of Raoul Trifno, Father Melissa Trinfo, and the Godfather Isabella Trinfo. I got to have the privilege to know the family, as Isabella is a dancer for the Westlake School of Performing Arts, and just want to close out on his behalf as well.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Also, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Eduardo Ellis Faraz, who is the grandfather of Ian Buena Ventura. She's actually... She's actually, Ian is related to me, but I've never actually met her, but I saw that on an obituary in Facebook. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Si Kwan Choi Leong. Many of you might know Alan Leong and Jonathan Leong. His mom was 93 and a half years old, and also I'd like to adjourn in memory of Emery Earl Rose III, a former Daly City resident, Jefferson School alumni, wife of Chris Rose and brother to Edward Rose. Also, to Juvenita Martinez Ruiz, who is the grandmother of Salvador Ruiz, who is one of our custodial services supervisor. Ms., did you have another one? No, you're good. Okay. With that, let me just have a moment of silence for all of them. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.